Okay. I will call to order the December 2nd, 2021, a regular meeting of the Hendersonville City Council. We begin our meetings with a silent invocation for people to pray and meditate as they choose, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Sophia will rise, please. Will join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the regardless of which stance my nation under God, invincible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have about 15 minutes for public comment time. We have five people who signed up for in-person comment. We have five people who sent in public comment ahead of time. If there is anyone who is online with us, if you would raise your hand now so I know how many people to will be wanting to speak. Can you check and see?
We have two right now with their hands raised.
Okay. I'll wait one more minute if anyone else. Okay, just two. So with that number of people, we will have to have two minutes per person and we will have the timer on the screen and I will be calling after two minutes. We have a lot of things to do tonight, so we're going to have to be a bit stricter about our public comment time. We'll start with the people who have signed up in person. And what you would do, come to the podium in the center and give your name and your address for the clerk's record, please. John Goolsbee.
My name is John Goolsbee. I live at 94 Creek Walk Lane. And I'm here to talk about the Half Moon Heights development. I want to start by saying that Tropical Storm Fred did a whammy all over North Caroli— I mean, North Carolina, particularly here in the mountains, but in Wolf Trace—or Wolf Chase, excuse me. Our retention ponds were basically full, you know, and we were pretty distraught about that. And we contacted—our HOA contacted Mike Hoppin, who I think was great. He gave us some advice, what to do to make our system better. And we've been working on that, per his guidance. So again, I want to thank him again. The other thing I want to talk about is in the Hendersonville Stormwater Regulations, Section 24-147(c), it says "Storm Water Quantity Controlled Discharge." And it says "Storm water at a rate equal to or less than the pre-development discharge rate for both the two-year 24-hour, the 10-year 24-hour storm, with the ability to pass the 25-year 24-hour storm." Now, the developer in the last meeting said that they would go with a 50-year, which is fantastic. I mean, that's really good. I just want to add one caveat to that. A 50-year storm is considered like 7.37 inches of rain in 24 hours, okay? Fred was nine inches of rain in approximately 24 hours. And the only thing I'm asking is, please, before you vote, in your head, make sure you're getting us right, because it's our homes at stake. Thank you.
Thank you. Robbie Goolsbee?
Hello, my name is Robbie Goolsbee. I live at 94 Creek Walk Lane. First of all, I'd like to thank each one of you for your service to the city council. I realize all of you have full-time jobs and families, so it must be overwhelming trying to dig through all the information that has come to you regarding not only Half Moon Heights, but the 1,700-plus housing units already approved this year. I can't imagine the weight of making these decisions during this time of such rapid growth in our little town, because the potential for dire consequences, which could affect so many in our community, is immense. That is why I'd like—I want to urge—excuse me—I want to urge you to slow down, perhaps even table this request, while you diligently consider the long-term effects a development of this size being built on a steep slope will have on the floodplain below. It is my understanding that there's an auto parts store, a Sonic drive-in, a storage facility, and an age 55-plus apartment complex that have already been permitted to be built, and are all within a mile area of Wolf Chase subdivision. So please look at the big picture of what this means on not only the already problematic traffic on 64 East, but on the additional stormwater runoff which will flow into Wolf Pen Creek through a culvert—that is already at capacity to handle—excuse me—the water of some of the recent storms. Tourists and residents alike flock to our apple orchards and vineyards, but I fear overbuilding may ultimately turn that part of 64 East into another Greenville Highway, Spartanburg Highway, King Grove Street flood area. Do you want to continue to attract tourists and new residents to our town? Now, I think it's time to tap the brake on some of these most recently proposed projects to give pause for the future of our town. In the words of Joni Mitchell from the '70s, "They paved paradise and put up a parking lot. They took all the trees and put them in a tree museum, and they charged the people a dollar and a half just to go see them. Don't it always seem to go that you don't know what you've got till it's gone? I've lived here my entire life, and I've never witnessed this kind of rapid growth."
That's your two minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Beth Malendine?
My name is Beth Malendine. I live at 135 Creek Walk Lane. That's in the Wolf Chase community. And we're directly impacted—or going to be impacted by this development of Half Moon Heights. For the record, I want it said that the construction of Ballantyne Commons early on began an unnatural flooding at the base of the mountain. The situation was taken to the courts by the former owner of the land, but the problem remained due to heavy rains. This demonstrates that the stormwater systems do not work adequately on this mountain. The risk of damage to Wolf Chase and our homes along the property line is very high. Flooding at the culvert bringing water from Wolf Pen Creek under Highway 64 always becomes blocked and overflows during heavy rainfall due to the stormwater runoff from all the developments and stormy—excuse me—city stormwater drains along 64. This overflow backs up the drains on Wolf Chase property. One day, it will break down the road and close the entrance to our HOA—the only entrance to our HOA. The city and county have done nothing to address or fix this problem prior to considering another development that will add even more stormwater runoff to an already existing problem. It doesn't make sense. Construction traffic will not be allowed to turn, around, or park on Wolf Chase private streets because they will damage the roads, and we will be responsible for fixing them. We request that all construction traffic go through Ballantyne Commons, since they are allowing egress to the new development on their private streets as part of the sale of their property. If the current gate on Half Moon Trail is taken down, it will open up traffic from construction vehicles. Ballantyne and Half Moon Heights residents lead to traffic congestion within our community. That will be dangerous to driver and pedestrian traffic along that road, making our only HOA entrance and junction at 64 dangerous and unmanageable at times.
Thank you, Ms. Malendine. Janice Malendine?
Hello, my name's Janice Malendine. I live at 135 Creek Walk Lane. For the record, Wolf Chase HOA residents have been strongly opposed to any development on the steep slope above us. Multiple City of Hendersonville comprehensive plan contradictions have been identified with the proposed development of Half Moon Heights. The Tree Board voted down the plan, and Wolf Chase residents are not comfortable with replacing hundreds of mature trees with saplings. Removing the tree canopy will put homes at risk with erosion and flooding. Prior to the Planning Board meeting on October 11th and the City Council meeting on November 4th, no notification signs were posted in the neighboring communities of Ballantyne, Wolf Chase, or Wolf Pen. In fact, a notification sign about Planning Board and City Council meetings were not installed in these communities until November 19th, long after both of those meetings had met. City Council members were asked by email, "Why? These signs were never posted, encouraging public input." We never got an answer. During the Planning Board meeting, members stated they were confused with all the changes actually being proposed to vote on. Some wanted to postpone the vote, to review the revised plans and visit the site prior to making a decision. The city planning manager pushed board members into a vote that evening in spite of these concerns. Many residents attending the meeting thought the city manager actually worked for the developer. Alternatively, during the City Council meeting, members wanted to take note—to take a vote, but this time, the city planning manager pushed that the vote be postponed. It appeared that those attending the meeting—to those attending the meeting—that the council members were going to vote against the developer, and this was a strategy to undermine the vote. No reason was given for the delay, but it was granted. My time has run out. Given these irregularities, please delay this vote or say no.
Thank you, Ms. Malendine. Lynn Williams?
Hello, council. I'm going to take this off for once so I can breathe. Thank you for your time today. My public comment has a few different points.
Name and address.
Oh, yes. Lynn Williams, 309 Chadwick Avenue. The first part is a Boyd Park update. We are requesting an investigation of historic designation by the Historic Preservation Commission, and we will be attending the upcoming meeting to submit public comment for that request. The purpose behind that is so that the council can be as informed as possible when making the decision about demolishing our 86-year-old public park. So I ask you to please be open-minded and to actually encourage the HPC to create an investigation into the historic designation. And once again, we do want the fire department to get everything they need. We're just asking for a small section of the park to be saved, potentially, and I have submitted that alternative design to you. I visited the Washburn Track—I think it was yesterday—as well as went to the neighborhood compatibility meeting, and I asked the council to please visit that land itself. It is absolutely incredible. It is the crown jewel of this city, and it really does need to be protected. So I ask you to please go there and check out the land yourself. As I expressed in a previous correspondence sent to the council this week, the idea about a local land trust specifically for Hendersonville, something that council member Miller had encouraged previously before. And so I'm asking for your support with helping with the development of this organization, whether its resources or anyone here in the audience are listening, so that we can conserve some of our local land and potentially still use it for sustainable land use, potentially creating jobs for our citizens. Fourthly, Half Moon Heights, I was invited there by the neighbors, and I ask the council to please maintain their vote count to reject this development, to please listen to the Tree Board that this development is incompatible with our way of life here.
That's the two minutes. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
If you could have the people who are online, the two people there, let them make their comments. Again, two minutes.
Allison, I can't seem to unmute them. If you could help me out there.
Josh Williams? You've been unmuted.
Yes, my name is Josh Williams. I am a resident of 724—can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I am a resident of 724 Woodcock Drive. I'm here to discuss the Green Meadows community. Since April of this year, residents of the community have come together and have hosted meetings in regards to some issues within the community. First, I would like to invite the members of the city council to take part in this next meeting, which will be next week, December 8th, at the police station, where we will further discuss issues that are going on within the community. We have seen some changes since this timeframe, but we would like to see more changes in interaction. And some of those changes would be the trafficking at certain hours of the day and at night. And that's pretty much all that I have to say at this time. And thank you for allowing me this time to present this to you. And again, the next meeting will be December 8th of next week at Agape Church on Cherry Street.
Thank you very much.
Next person?
Ken Fitch, you've been unmuted.
Ken Fitch, 1046 Patton Street. We are gathered tonight on an occasion of transition affirmation, reaffirmation, farewell, and celebration. I had prepared to speak of the persons in the ceremony tonight, but with the numbers of citizen speakers, that is not possible, so I apologize for any lack of mention of distinguished persons. However, we must say that we live in historic Hendersonville, where our history is shaped by our geography and our people. And it is the people who have shaped the character of this small town through their uplifting of the values of friendship, community, and respect and care for others through a myriad of interactions and education, commerce, worship, and civic involvement. And no one has embodied those small-town values more than Jeff Miller, in a life lived here growing up, graduated from Hendersonville High School, and with a distinguished career as a local businessman and civic leader. And it is those values that he has brought to council, with a unique capacity to listen and to seek compromise in complex situations by reaching out to discover and affirm those feared values to make important decisions that affect us all. And as we all know, he embarked on a mission to recognize others who have served beyond our boundaries, those who have left home to serve the nation in faraway places, and also then to recognize them as valued members of the community when they return home. His honor air flights remain a signal achievement of community recognition. But tonight, we do not need to fly Jeff Miller to Washington, DC, as we can honor and celebrate his service to us here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kent. Thank you. I think he should have had a few more minutes.
Should we give him four or five more? We have, as I said, five digital comments, and I will time these as well. I think there's only one that might have the two-minute limit. First is from Joseph Colada, 38 Foxtail in Hendersonville. And the comment here, "We are against the proposed Half Moon Trail development because there is no second entrance as required by regulation. Half Moon Trail seems to end in the parking lot of Ballantyne Commons Apartments. The traffic flow the developer is trying to force into Wolf Chase is totally unreasonable. There is no traffic signal from Half Moon Trail onto US 64, where the speed limit is supposed to be 45 miles an hour. Entry onto 64 is dangerous at best. A floodplain will get worse if the developer cuts down a lot of trees and ruin property. The developer is making only token concessions to the council in order to try to force his development on us. Ask him for how many houses have been completed at his development in Fairview subdivision. It seems those poor owners are left standing, waiting for someone to complete the development. Something is very, very wrong here. Please do not approve this disaster on Wolf Chase and Wolf Pen." Thank you. Next one is from Brian Scott, 447 Ballantyne Commons Circle, Apartment 202. "Traffic, traffic, traffic. Those of us who live here know that stretch of road between Howard Gap and Dana Road is a mess most of the time. Try going out on a Friday afternoon or evening. Closer to the proposed Half Moon development, the light at Howard Gap heading south where Chimney Rock meets Four Seasons is often backed up even with existing development. Often, this is because the light on Four Seasons at Walmart is backed up. A green at Howard Gap means nothing if there is nowhere to go. Add another 200-plus cars, two per house average, and it contributes to gridlock in Hendersonville. Is that what we want? Has anyone done a study on how many more students will be dispersed in already overcrowded schools? Property ownership rights are not granted in a vacuum. It's up to city council to weigh the pluses and minuses of each development in toto to Hendersonville relevant to the quality of life that makes it so attractive. Old timers and new timers will tell you it's getting worse. The golden egg will crack piece by piece. It is up to the council to make the tough decisions as to when enough is enough. Bottom line, what's in it for Hendersonville. There are plenty of new developments that make more sense than 95 houses on a steep mountainside in an already crowded housing environment." Next is from David Litgett, 68 Winter Wren Circle. Comment, "Please deny access to Half Moon Heights for development. I would like to encourage council members to go to the park in Flat Rock and walk the 1.5-mile perimeter trail, a lovely gravel trail with side trails. There are benches along the way which have been donated. There are birdhouses also. Be sure to visit the nature center, which is just off the main trail. There are plaques showing the types of trees and their leaves, birds, flowers, and wildlife. A member of the Tree Board may wish to find out if there are any 100-year-old trees in the area in question and designate it an historic area. I know this area is considerably less than the park, but that doesn't make it less valuable. The value is in preservation, beauty, and animal habitat. Speaking of habitat, I was out walking near my house in Wolf Pen and saw a deer in a yard. Two nights ago, we saw a red fox. What do you think—where do you think they live? Please deny access to Half Moon Heights subdivision and use the area for a wonderful park and duplicate the park in miniature. Thanks." Next one is from Gus Marchink, 40 Snowy Egret Way. "By now, you have heard many citizens communicate to you valid reasons Half Moon Heights should not proceed. I will not repeat what you have already heard with the one exception in the next paragraph. There is a real possibility that removal of 73% of the mature trees with equal number of saplings—not three inches for three inches—will have a direct adverse effect to the property owners of Wolf Chase, resulting in inadequate stormwater control runoff and flooding. Below is central to my understanding how your decision will affect the land in question. Just like placing the live starfish back into the ocean I shared with you at the last city council meeting, your decision also matters to the living land in question. Living with the land, in the West, most Christians have been shaped by culture and faith into a paradigm that normalizes acquisition at great cost to others, ourselves, and the land itself. As Richard puts it, 'Perhaps the primary example of our lack of attention to the Christ mystery can be seen in the way we continue to pollute and ravage planet Earth, the very thing we all stand on and live from.' The Illogian scholar and Cherokee descendant Randy Woodley describes the difference between the attitude of early North American settlers and the indigenous people who were already present on the land. He writes, "The very land itself meant something quite different to the newcomer than it did to the host people. Something was missing. The difficulty, as a native saw it, was with the settlers themselves and their failure to tread lightly with humility and respect on the land. Settlers wanted to live on the land, but the host people lived with the land. Living on the land means objectifying the land and natural resources and being shortsighted concerning the future. Living with the land means respecting the natural balance." And that is the two minutes. There was more, but that was two minutes. And the final one is from Sandra Litgett, 68 Winter Wren Circle. "Please deny access to Half Moon Heights for developing high-end housing, which we do not need. We also do not need any more congestion on the roads and destruction of nature and animal habitat. We need a park at this end of the city, and this is a lovely area that will preserve the green area with wonderful mature trees and animal habitat. Make walking paths and a picnic area. Preserve the present housing in Wolf Chase and Wolf Pen by creating an entrance for cars off 64 and an immediate parking area with bathroom facilities. The Duke Energy right-of-way can accommodate walking paths, wildflowers, and a dog run. Duke may wish to participate by cleaning up that section, which they indicated they would leave in acceptable condition, and they have not done that. Access for them will still be available when needed. In addition, much of the 33-acre parcel can be left wild and undeveloped as ecologically pristine. Maybe the DNR could eventually establish a nature walk for school trips. Please deny access to Half Moon Heights and establish a park in order to demonstrate that Hendersonville is an ecologically conscious city." That was the last of our public comments for this evening. Right. We will next go to consideration of the agenda, and I do want to mention that Councilmember Hensley is online with us. She was not able to be here this evening due to illness, but she is participating. It was noticed that a council member would be participating remotely, so she is able to join in the discussion and vote. Consideration of the agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to have added to or removed from the agenda this evening?
Madam Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
I guess I need to talk to council about whether or not we want to change that hearing, or is that now or is that later?
That'll be after. We're considering our agenda. When we get to that, we'll—
Okay, got it. Okay.
—we'll take care of that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there are no amendments, right? Okay. I move the City Council approve the agenda as presented.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Not? We will have to have a roll call vote. Ms. Hensley?
Aye.
Ms. Simpson?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor votes aye also. So we have our agenda for this evening. We have two items of unfinished business. The first is a rezoning for the conditional use district of Half Moon Heights. Staff have anything they want to add to this?
Just real quickly, wanted to review the conditions that are included in the motion and to include a site plan which shows some modifications to the lots associated with the 30% slope in the basement requirement, which is one of the conditions. So just to go through, there are a total of eight or nine conditions. I apologize. Let me confirm. Nine conditions total. Condition number one, the planning—you'll see in each of these is the Planning Board recommended condition, and then the developer agreed condition. The developer agreed condition is what's included in your motion and in the ordinance. So condition number one, Planning Board recommended, size the stormwater management for a 25-year storm event. Developer has agreed to a 50-year storm event sizing for the stormwater management system. The developer— The developer contacted staff this week to offer condition number two, which was to incur the cost of reevaluating the stormwater management system at Wolf Chase. This was not considered by planning board, as it had not been previously recommended by staff or anyone else. That's purely developer-initiated. Condition number three, utilize low-impact development practices through incorporation of pervious concrete for sidewalks and driveways. The developer agrees to that planning board recommendation. Condition number four was to protect trees that have been proposed in accordance with Section 15-4 of the zoning ordinance. The developer agrees to do so with one exception to that, which relates to the specific fence construction standards, and has proposed to use two rows of silt fencing. The tree board did review that proposed alternative and agreed with it. Condition number five, recess garages or shift parking to the rear of lots, make the front porch the primary architectural feature fronting the street. The developer has agreed to include front porches as an architectural feature fronting the street on a majority of homes in Phase 1 of the development, and to pursue this goal as feasible in Phase 2 and Phase 3 of the development. Condition number six was to provide the pedestrian crossing to the mailbox cluster and school bus stop, and the developer does agree to that planning board recommendation. Condition number seven, reduce the impact of the development and preserve quality undisturbed open space by clustering the development in areas outside of the 30% slope. The developer has agreed to construct basement sites on lots 14 through 20 where slopes range from 29% to 39%. Condition number eight, provide a right-of-way connection to Gypsy Lane to accommodate pedestrian and utility connections, and the developer does agree to that recommendation. And then finally, the developer will work with staff to design a nature trail that has the ability to connect to adjacent neighborhoods, and developer also agrees to that planning board recommendation.
Lou, will you go back to number two?
Yes.
I don't see that in our motion.
Conditions on it? Should be, perhaps, I believe I updated that agenda cover, maybe it didn't make it into the...
But you had eight, right?
I have a total of nine.
You have nine, okay.
We have a...
We only have eight.
You only have eight. So you do not have two, then, in that motion. That would be the one that you do not have. Which is to incur the cost of reevaluating the existing stormwater management system at Wolf Chase.
Oh, maybe it's in this part, but not in the other part.
And the final slide is just the layout site plan with the adjustments to the lots associated with the basement parcels. So this is the site plan, 93 lots. And that's all that staff has as an update, where available to answer questions as needed. The developer is also here, should you have questions for them. And we do have Jonathan Guy online. He's on the Zoom meeting. Jonathan is with Kim Lee Horn and is our traffic consultant.
Does anyone have questions?
I have some questions about some of the comments that were made in the public comment time.
Okay.
They referenced flooding in the culvert on 64. That culvert would be a part of NC DOT.
It's part of the NC DOT right-of-way.
Yeah. Can we do any urging of them to look at it?
We absolutely can ask. My guess is it's designed to a typical storm standard, but we can check to make sure that everything's open, have them check to make sure there's no blockage under the road. And on the other side, we can absolutely ask them to do that. They're maintenance folks.
Yeah, I think we should definitely do that. And then we were talking before about asking about getting a light put on 64. I know, I know what, I can't remember his name, the guy from...
Ashton.
Yeah. He was saying that they like to see statistics beforehand, but I think we all know that we're going to need a light there. We don't need someone to get into a serious car accident to know that, because it's already a nightmare to get across there. So I don't know, I mean, I know it's their decision at the end of the day, but if we can write some sort of memo or letter or something or...
I'd be happy, be happy to write, we'll be happy to write them a letter. I think it will, I'll just be, I mean, I think they'll want to look at their warrants, and DOT will not install a light on their, at their own dollar unless it meets the warrants. So, but we'll be glad to write the letter.
Okay. I just think it's a shame.
I actually, I don't, can you guys hear me? It's Jen.
Yeah.
At our last Transportation Advisory Council meeting, I started the ball rolling with the DOT people about that light, actually, and they were getting back to me with information. So I'm just waiting on them at this point.
Okay, good. Thank you.
You said they don't want to pay for it on their dime. Does that mean if we're willing to pay for it, they're more willing to do it?
In my experience, somebody else is paying for it, they'll consider it.
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, those things aren't cheap, but that's just good to know.
Okay. And then the last thing was, actually, there's two more. Do, they referenced the stormwater measures in Ballentine not being sufficient. Did they have, I mean, it was the same, was it the same regulations that we have now? Or do we have...
So we would have to confirm that. There may have been changes to the stormwater ordinance between the time that Ballentine was developed and today, and the stormwater regs and ordinance that are applicable to the project Half Moon. But I would believe that they would be comparable.
Okay.
Councilmember Simpson, that question, Councilmember Hensley asked the same question today. Just for the record, we are, and Mike Hupman, I think, is on, on the line on Zoom. This is the first we've heard of any concern about Ballentine Commons.
Okay.
Period. Our understanding is that the water for Ballentine actually drains on the other side of the ridge. So it may drain on the other side of the ridge, and it may go down the edge of the road. But it, I do, we do not believe, and Mike correct me, that it does drain through Wolf Pen Creek. It drains on the other side of the ridge. And we are not aware of any, the city's not receiving any complaint regarding...
I can speak to, and Mike can, could confirm this, but Ballentine is in a separate watershed from what ends up at the culvert at 64. The Ballentine stormwater does not go to that point. It goes across the street, goes across 64, and ends up in Clear Creek, and that floodplain in a different watershed. So, but I hadn't heard the stormwater issue previously.
And we have a picture of the watershed, too, if anybody wants to look at it, but first we've heard of it.
Okay. And I have one more question, just for clarification for everyone. The roads, the streets that are in Wolf Chase are not private streets, they are public streets.
So specifically, Half Moon Trail is a public street.
Okay.
It's a public road.
But the other streets?
The other streets in the development are not public roads. It's only Half Moon Trail that is a public road.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. All right, council, discussion or a motion?
My only comment that I'll make, which has not changed since a month ago, is that, you know, in my now 12 years on council, there have just been few things that have had this overwhelming objection by residents. And I don't think it's, for many people, I think it's because they don't want anything, but there are certainly groups of people who are willing to compromise on something. So if council approves this, it is definitely approving it over, an overwhelming number of objections from the residents from the city of Hendersonville.
Other comments?
All right, extremely long. Madam Mayor, I move City Council adopt an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Hendersonville, changing the zoning designation of the subject property PIN 9568001446 from PRD CZD Plan Residential Development Conditional Zoning District to PRD CZD Plan Residential Development Conditional Zoning District, based on the site plan submitted by the applicant and subject to the following permitted, to the following. Permitted uses shall include residential dwellings, single-family. Conditions that shall be satisfied prior to the final site plan approval include: size the stormwater management system to retain runoff for a 50-year storm event, and incur the cost of reevaluating the stormwater management system at Wolf Chase, and utilize low-impact development practices NR-3.2 through incorporation of pervious concrete for sidewalks and driveways NR-3.2, and protect the trees that have been proposed to be preserved in accordance with Section 15-4 of the zoning ordinance, except as it relates to the specific fence construction standards established in 15-4. As an alternative to this construction standard, the project will use two rows of silt fencing, and include front porches as an architectural feature fronting the street on a majority of homes in Phase 1 of the development. Pursue this goal as feasible in Phase 2 and Phase 3 of the development PH-3.1.1, and provide a pedestrian crossing to the mailbox cluster/school bus stop, and construct basement sites on lots 14 through 20 where slopes ranging from 29% to 39% are present NC-2.1 and NR-2.3, and provide right-of-way connection to Gypsy Lane to accommodate pedestrian connection TC-1.4.1 in utility connections per city code, and developer will work with staff to design a nature trail that has the ability to connect to adjacent neighborhoods. Finding that the rezoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan's future land use map, and that the rezoning is reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons, single-family detached is a primary use stated in the Land and Use Development Chapter, and the proposed density of the development is in line with the Land and Use Development Chapter's guidance.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? I do have thought a lot about it. I know the neighbors are very concerned, but I still feel that the property will be developed, and this is, this developer has worked with staff to make modifications, and that housing is needed at all price points in the city. And I know, and yes, it is going to be a change for the neighbors, and I am sorry about that, but it's just, I do feel that this development is appropriate in this area. Anyone else want to comment?
I'll comment. So based upon the article that came out in Mills River, there's no question, these houses are going to be in excess of half a million to a million dollars. So I just, I'm not sure there's a housing need for that. So I disagree with that statement.
Wait a minute. What are these houses? Again, you're saying how much these houses are going to be?
I mean, if the ones in Mills River are worth 1.1 million, how could these not be worth similar, if not more, than those?
But either way, we don't base decisions on...
I didn't say that. I was just replying to what the mayor said about needing housing, and my response was...
Okay, let me turn it right around at you. And this was an education I was given. I hadn't thought about it. But when people are already pre-approved for a loan of, and we'll use $500,000, and there are no homes in there, right now, there's a shortage in that price range. I don't know how you can just jump and say there are going to be a million dollars when that's not the price I think these homes are going to sell for. But that being said, what has happened, the people that are pre-approved for a half million dollars, $450,000, aren't finding homes. There aren't any at that. So there can't go up, so they go down. And they get, they find a house that's on the market for 250, and they offer 275. Now, the people that have been approved for 250 can't go above 250. And this is a real example that was shown to me. And so granted, they couldn't afford the 400 or 500,000-home, but they could have afforded the 250, but the 250s are gone because the folks that are approved for the higher amounts are having to go to the lower homes, bid above the asking price, and just put that money into the home when they do it. So it's, it's all-inclusive. It's just not, I don't want to see us get in some kind of class warfare here. We don't need to do that. The homes as presented to us weren't a million dollars. And even if they were, that's really not how we have to look at this. We have to look at, everyone has a right to develop their property. They don't have a right to overdevelop it. We approve it all the time for developments. And whereas none of us are happy about seeing green space gone, people do have that right. If this were simply R15, the most basic one, the same amount of homes could be built there, and there would not be the ability to put in conditions. So these are the strongest conditions I've seen in my eight years here, and I was on planning board for over 10. I've never seen a developer more willing to make concessions, even though you're unhappy with them. But you can't use government to condemn property. It's wrong. We can't just condemn it because you have a bad gut feel about it, or it's not what you want. I understand, I wouldn't want it either if I were you. I'd get it. But when a developer has come in and in good faith done everything that was asked, looked at all the ordinances that we have in place and the building codes, and respected them, it's wrong for us to just jerk the rug because folks aren't happy. I mean, I had some of you tell me, you just don't ever want anything there. The city can't buy that property and buy every piece of property that somebody doesn't want developed. And I know that city staff will hold their feet to the fire and make them, if needed to, force them to adhere to everything they've agreed to. And that's all you can do at this point. It's no fun sitting up here and seeing all these eyes looking at me mad, but it's what I have to do, at least for another hour. And, you know, it's a tough life sometimes, but we have to, we have to do it, and I have to base it on facts that are given to me by my staff and by, and we pushed this long and hard to get details. And we do the best we can. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Not? Well... Madam Mayor, may I ask for a technical correction to the motion? Yes. In the motion, it said, "Conditions that shall be satisfied prior to final site plan approval." Not all of those can be satisfied prior to site plan approval, so I would ask if Councilmember Simpson would delete the words "prior to final site plan approval" from the motion, just as a technical correction. Okay.
Can I just say I don't want to delete those words, or do I have to read the whole thing again?
I think you can accept the amendment to delete those words.
Oh, I would accept that amendment to delete those words.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Okay, so we will, we will vote on this. And again, we have to do a roll call vote. Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Ms. Simpson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Hensley?
Aye.
Mayor votes aye. The vote is four to one. The motion passes, and the development can proceed. Thank you. And if any of you would like to leave, you may. You don't have to stay for the next one, which is, got to find it, "A continuation of a public hearing to consider annexation and sur-service agreement with the town of Laurel Park." We'll wait about two minutes, and then we will continue. We can go ahead with this. The public hearing is still open for the annexation and sur-service agreement with the town of Laurel Park. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in this public hearing? Anyone who wishes to speak in this public hearing? Is there anyone online who is seeking recognition to speak?
No one has raised their hands yet.
Okay. Wait a few seconds and see.
Still no one.
Don't see anyone? All right, we will close that public hearing. Any council discussion or a motion?
Madam Mayor, move City Council adopt, one, a resolution of the City of Hendersonville City Council to approve inter-local agreement with the town of Laurel Park, and, number two, an ordinance of the City of Hendersonville City Council to approve inter-local agreement with the town of Laurel Park.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
Madam Mayor, I would like to throw in one thing as I head out the door. On this, I hope, I don't like, and I've been very outspoken, I don't like ETJs. It's not a big thing. And I would really urge the county, Board of Commissioners, and the new council to have the opportunity to sit down and have open discussions about, you know, hopefully eliminating ETJs and create a growth ring for the city of Hendersonville that's acknowledged by both parties that anyone that comes in within that growth ring needs sewer, whatever, it becomes a part of the city. So, that a lot of the bickering and the dissension that has accompanied so many occasions like this could be, be put to rest, and we could just all work together and move forward. So, just want to throw that out there, like I said, as a little challenge, a good challenge.
Okay. Any further discussion? Not? We will vote on the motion, the annexation and service agreement with the town of Laurel Park. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Hensley?
Aye.
Ms. Simpson?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. So, that has been approved. Well, Mr. Miller, you can't quite leave for a few more minutes.
I mean, I don't get to hook right now.
Want to come around to the front?
Parking lot clear out.
I think we all should get those.
Okay.
There's some hot candy right there. Got the little hanging thing in that bag.
I thought it was a prize here.
Oh, take that out.
Here.
Okay.
And we have a proclamation...
Yes, ma'am.
...of respect and appreciation for City Councilmember Jeff Miller. Whereas on the second day of December 2021, after serving the past eight years as council member, Jeff Miller departs, leaving behind him an impressive legacy of public service. We, the governing body, employees and citizens of Hendersonville wish to acknowledge publicly the contributions made by Jeff Miller. And whereas Jeff Miller served the City of Hendersonville as councilman, December 2013 to December 2021, and whereas Jeff Miller during his tenure on the City of Hendersonville City Council was instrumental in creation of the Hendersonville Water Sewer Advisory and Business Advisory Committees, implementing a water sewer rate study and utility extension policies to provide more equitable funding of future utility projects, advocating for municipal service district property owners and equalization of tax rates between the two districts, implementing a five-party agreement between the City of Hendersonville, Henderson County, Wingate University, Blue Ridge Community College, and Hardy Memorial Hospital for the construction and lease of and relative interests, excuse me, in a building to be situated at 747 Sixth Avenue West for a health science facility, advocating for the purchase of property between Church Street and King Street to conduct, construct a downtown parking garage within a block of Main Street, supporting the sale and redevelopment of the Gray Hosery Mill and putting it back on the tax rolls, the purchase of property and construction of downtown public restrooms, the purchase of property for a new police station, and reconstruction of Fire Station Number One, and strongly advocate for city employees' benefits and as one of their biggest supporters. And whereas during his tenure on the City Council, Jeff Miller has continued to be a staunch proponent of quality development in Hendersonville, and has given voice to concerns of the business and development interests while balancing these concerns with those of the larger Hendersonville community. Whereas it is with great sense of gratitude that we now express our appreciation and acknowledge that Jeff Miller is hereby acknowledged as having been a good, loyal, and faithful public servant of the City of Hendersonville. Now, therefore, I, Barbara Volf, the mayor of the City of Hendersonville, you hereby proclaim that this proclamation expresses the deep appreciation on behalf of the citizens of the City of Hendersonville for the valuable service which councilmember Jeff Miller has provided the city, and that this proclamation is hereby presented to Jeffrey Laine Miller, and a copy of same shall be placed within the records of the City of Hendersonville. Thank you.
Do I get a minute to fire back?
Yes, you do.
Well, first, I got to say, coming on eight years ago and having...
If you want to sit in.
You can sit in your seat right here.
I did that?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's yours, too.
Hey, y'all really do think I'm old. I want to start out by saying congratulations to Debbie. You've, you've been witness to a lot of this. I know you've wanted the opportunity to serve, and you've worked hard to get here, and I'm leaving you a little note up here, but do good things. Do good things. Keep doing, keep doing good things. And, yeah, and Barbara, where'd you go?
She's behind you.
Okay. Thanks a lot from day one. I've been lucky to have a really strong mayor, a very fair person, a bridge builder. You always set a great example, and you always had an open door. Thank you for all of that. And I'm so glad you're, you're here for more years at least, and taking care of that. And Jerry and Barbara, what a great thing you guys did in hiring John Connet. Good move on that. And John, you've been a lot of fun to work with. And I always like it when I see you rubbing your head, I know I've gotten to you about something. And all you department heads, you know what I'm talking about. But thanks. You've put together an incredible staff, and I have no doubt that the city's going to have some great stuff in front of it. And Jerry, you got four ladies, you better just, you better toe the line, because the ladies are here to run the city now. And I can't wait to see what they do. I was blessed to work with Ron and Steve, and also now with Jen and my suite mate over here, Lindsay. So, I appreciate everything. I hope, I hope I've left a decent, a decent memory. Worked hard to make sure that our city employees, you know, you guys are delivering the services. You're critical, and I hope you know I respected you. Chief Miller and the Fire Department, one of the coolest things I've ever done was in bed with you guys for 24 hours. I even learned to slide down a pole without killing myself. And what our emergency service folks do is incredible. We're blessed. So, with that being said, I know you've got a lot of business to do. I'm not going to be sitting up here, but I'm not going away. And if I can do anything for you, Deb, you got my number. And all you guys, too. John, keep me a little bit involved. I'll bring my key fob in, so I can't come in the back door anymore. But thanks a lot, everybody. Thank you.
Can take a couple minutes here. I think we need to kind of rearrange and get up, get the people who need to be up Not official yet. Up four minutes. and presentation of certificate of election to Mayor Barbara G. Volf by the Honorable Judge Emily Cowan, District Court Judge, District 29B for Henderson County. I have my daughter. Here. Mayor Volf, if you'll just please repeat after me, or would you like me just to read it, and you say I do, or I will? Whatever you normally do. I normally just say it, and then you say I do, or I will prevent everybody from saying it twice. Okay. Okay. I... Barbara G. Volf. Do solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as City of Hendersonville mayor, so help me God. I do. I... Barbara G. Volf. Do solemnly swear that I will well and truly execute the duties of the office of City of Hendersonville mayor, to the best of my skill and ability, according to law, so help me God. I do. And God, I'm ready. Okay. And that one. All right. Thank you for coming and being with us. Thanks for having us. Thank you. Hear people argue, and I don't have to make the decision. Thank you. to Councilmember Jerry A. Smith Jr. by the Honorable J. Calvin Hill, Chief District Court Judge of the 28th Judicial District, Buncombe County, and the Honorable Jonathan C. Pars, Magistrate Henderson County.
Judges do things a little bit differently. I like to have people say every word of their oath, and I think that's what Mr. Smith wants to do. Raise your left hand on the Bible, raise your right. Repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Jerry Andrew Smith Jr.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support and maintain the Constitution...
That I will support and maintain the Constitution...
And laws of the United States...
And laws of the United States...
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina...
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina...
Not inconsistent therewith...
Not inconsistent therewith...
And that I will faithfully discharge...
And that I will faithfully discharge...
The duties of my office...
The duties of my office...
As City of Hendersonville City Councilmember...
As the City of Hendersonville City Councilmember...
So help me God...
So help me God...
Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Jerry Andrew Smith Jr.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will well and truly execute...
That I will well and truly execute...
The duties of the office...
The duties of the office...
Of City of Hendersonville Councilmember...
Of City of Hendersonville Councilmember...
To the best of my skill and ability...
To the best of my skill and ability...
According to the law...
According to the law...
So help me God...
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Sure.
So, for those of you who are here, I almost said cow, sorry. Judge Hill and Magistrate Pars here and I all went to law school together at North Carolina Central. John graduated in '92, I graduated in '93, and Judge Hill graduated in '94. We were, I was, there were certainly less of me then than there is now. But this is a proud moment for the school, law school at North Carolina Central, for
Congratulations again.
Thank you, I appreciate you very much. Can we get a picture with everyone?
So you got to be sure of it.
Angela Reese will, no doubt, she'll take care of that.
Next, we have the administration of the oath of office and presentation of certificate of election to Councilmember Debbie O'Neil Roundtree by the Honorable Mayor Barbara G. Volk with special guest Reverend Donald McDaniel of Mount Carmel Baptist Church. And anybody else you want to have come up? You can have everybody up there.
My mom, Lou.
Okay. Would you like to hold the Bible?
Hold the Bible.
Hold the Bible for her. Left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. And then you will repeat after me. Aye, and state your name.
Debbie O'Neil Roundtree.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
As City of Hendersonville Councilmember. City of Hendersonville Councilmember. So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye, and state your name.
Debbie O'Neil Roundtree.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will well and truly execute.
I will well and truly execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of City of Hendersonville Councilmember.
Of City of Hendersonville Councilmember.
To the best of my skill and ability.
To the best of my skill and ability.
According to law.
According to law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right. O'Neil Roundtree. Okay. And you will get this, and I believe this one is your copy, and then file this one.
Debbie, you want to get a picture with all your family up there? This is going on a Christmas card, everybody smile.
You want all the faces. Come on.
Are you going to take them last off?
Yes, thank you, dear.
Oh, I guess I should go get those, shouldn't I?
Ken? All right. Next remarks. Anyone? I just, I'm looking forward to another four years of guiding this group and just appreciate the opportunity. Thank the folks who voted for me and everybody else in the community as well. I don't talk a lot. Jared, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
I do. It is an honor to represent the City of Hendersonville on City Council. I want to thank the voters who elected me to serve another term. I want to thank my wife Anne for her support, as well as support of my children Martha, Miriam, and JT, and my parents, my dad Jerry Senior, my mom Lou, my stepmom Susan, who were here tonight. I thank my supporters who helped so much during the campaign, whether it was contacting voters, or running down signs, or teaching me how to use Facebook and Instagram. All of your efforts are and will always be greatly appreciated. Hendersonville is at a crossroads, as is always the case after an election. We are a unique cultural collection of small-town traits, like senior neighbors at the grocery store or at a local sporting event, with a collection of urban traits, like having a college, a theater company, a collection of wonderful restaurants and pubs, and of course, being known or well-known to a lot of people who do not live here. And into this is thrust a new council, vested with making decisions about the direction of the culture Hendersonville will take. This is not an easy task, because we are so accessible to the people on whom our decisions depend. So we know their pain and their joy that they feel about Hendersonville. As I take my position on council, I take seriously my pledge to maintain the small-town lifestyle that many of us moved here to enjoy, while recognizing that responsible growth is inevitable at this point in the 175th year of Hendersonville's existence. To my fellow council members, I look forward to serving with you with respect, humility, diligence, and passion for Hendersonville, its residents, businesses, and visitors. To the staff, I look forward to working with you as we take the ideas that are decided here at council and make them happen, with expertise, precision, and compassion for the people that we serve. To the residents of Hendersonville, I look forward to serving you as both a council member and a high school teacher. I hope that you always feel that I listen to your ideas and take your point of view seriously when I come to my ultimate decision as to how I will vote. Finally, to my family, I pledge that I will first be a dad, a husband, and a son before I am anything else. I thank God for this opportunity, and I am ready to get to work.
I think also that Reverend Donald McDaniel have a couple of words that he would like to say, and then I'll say something.
Yes, sir. You put him on the spot.
I can't hear you online if you don't have a mic. Yeah.
Okay. It's two things you don't do. You don't give a preacher a chance to stand in front of a congregation. And you most definitely don't give, you know, a microphone. But to the council, to Debbie, I've seen her grow, I've seen her go through some things, adversities, I've seen her raise children, and they're beautiful children, except when they pick on me. But I just want to say this. This shouldn't be looked at as a job, but it should be looked at as a time that you can serve people. And I would say this. Do the duty of a council, as you would under God, serve people. Do what's right by people. Your choices and your decisions might not be popular to all. Jesus was not popular to all, but He did the right thing. So I would advise all of you, do the right thing, and God will bless whatever you do.
And I'll be short, I won't be before you long. I just would like to thank the people of the greater Hendersonville for believing in me and believing in my vision, for the goodwill of all people of Hendersonville. Thank you.
Okay. Next is the election of Mayor pro tempore and administration of both of the office by the Honorable Barbara G. Volk. The floor is open for nominations for the position of Mayor pro tempore. Are there nominations?
Madam, oh, sorry. Excuse me. Madam Mayor, I would like to nominate Lindsey Simpson for Mayor pro tempore.
Okay, Lindsey Simpson has been nominated as Mayor pro tempore. Are there further nominations?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to nominate Jerry Smith.
Okay, Jerry Smith has been nominated for Mayor pro tempore. Are there further nominations?
Madam Mayor, I would like to nominate Jerry Smith.
Okay, it isn't necessary to nominate. It's already, the nomination's already in. We vote in order of the way the nominations were given. So we will have to do, again, a roll call vote for, first of all, those in favor of Lindsey Simpson as Mayor pro tem. Ms. Hensley?
Aye.
Ms. Roundtree?
Aye.
Okay. Ms. Simpson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Help me, right. Nay.
Okay. Mayor votes aye. The vote is four to one in favor of Lindsey Simpson as Mayor pro tempore for the City of Hendersonville for the next two years. Okay? Do another vote of office here. Okay. Oh. You can just put your hand on it down there. All right. Aye, and state your name.
Lindsey Nicole Simpson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of my office as City of Hendersonville Mayor pro tempore.
Of my office as City of Hendersonville Mayor pro tempore.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye, and state your name.
Aye, Lindsey Nicole Simpson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will well and truly execute.
That I will well and truly execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of City of Hendersonville Mayor pro tempore.
Of City of Hendersonville Mayor pro tempore.
To the best of my skill and ability.
To the best of my skill and ability.
According to law.
According to law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay. Have to sign again. Use sign there, sign at the bottom. We'll fill it in, we'll get it to you.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Schedule of council meetings. City Clerk, anything you want to add to that?
No ma'am, I provided a schedule of meetings for the 2022 year.
Okay. I think they are regular, except for the February meeting, which, at the request of the city manager, is going to be held on the second Thursday instead of first Thursday. But otherwise, it's our regular date. If someone would like to move that we approve that schedule?
Madam Mayor, I move the City Council approve the 2022 regular schedule of meetings as presented, and direct the City Clerk to publish this notice, and accorded with the North Carolina general statutes.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Not. Those in favor of approving the regular schedule, go down the list again. Ms. Roundtree?
Aye.
Ms. Simpson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Hensley?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. Thank you. Next, we have a variety of appointments. First is the Fireman's Relief Fund. Two seats currently, Mr. Smith and Ms. Hensley are on there. Would anyone like to make nominations for the Fireman's Relief Fund?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to nominate Jerry Smith and Jennifer Hensley.
Okay. Jerry Smith and Jennifer Hensley have been nominated. Are there further nominations for Fireman's Relief Fund? Not those in favor of Jerry Smith and Jennifer Hensley. I guess we've got to go down the list again. Madam Attorney, can we get all the nominations and then just vote once? Or do we have, as long as there are only the appropriate number of seats to be filled?
Yes ma'am, I think you could do that.
Okay. If we have more than the number of seats, we will vote separately. Otherwise, we will vote at the end of all of these. French Broad River Metropolitan Planning Organizational Technical Advisory Committee, currently Jennifer Hensley is serving. Would someone like to nominate an individual for the MPO?
Madam Mayor, I move that City Council appoint Councilmember Jennifer Hensley to the French Broad River Metropolitan Planning Organization Technical Advisory Committee.
Okay. All right, thank you. Jennifer Hensley has been nominated. Other further nominations? If not, we will vote that one at the end as well. French Broad River.
Henderson County.
Henderson County, yes. This is separate but related. French Broad River Metropolitan Planning Organizational Technical Advisory Committee. Ms. Hensley is on that currently. Other nominations for the Henderson County MPO?
Madam Mayor, I move that City Council appoint Councilmember Jennifer Hensley to the Henderson County French Broad River Metropolitan Planning Organization Technical Advisory Committee.
Ms. Hensley has been nominated. Other further nominations? Ms. Hensley has been nominated, other further nominations? Not, nominations are closed. We will go on to the Henderson County Public Schools Facility Committee. Current members are Mr. Smith and former Councilmember Jeff Miller. Are there any nominations for the Public Schools Facility Committee?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to nominate Jerry Smith and Debbie O'Neal Roundtree.
Okay. Jerry Smith and Debbie Roundtree have been nominated for the Public Schools Facility Committee. Are there further nominations? Not, nominations are closed. Land of Sky Regional Council, two members plus an alternate, currently serving Mayor Volk, Lindsey Simpson, and alternate City Manager Connet. Are there nominations for the Land of Sky Regional Council?
Madam Mayor, I move the City Council appoint Mayor Barbara Volk and Lindsey Simpson to the Land of Sky Regional Council. Do I need to list City Manager as a occupant? No.
Pardon? I couldn't hear the last part.
You need to list John as well.
Okay, Mr. Connet, okay. Right, Mayor Volk and Lindsey Simpson have been nominated for Land of Sky Regional Council with City Manager Connet as the alternate. Are there further nominations? Nominations for that are closed. Mills River Partnership, the current member was Councilmember Miller. Are there nominations?
Madam Mayor, I move this City appoint Lindsey Simpson to the Mills River Partnership.
Okay, Lindsey Simpson has been nominated for Mills River Partnership. Are there further nominations? Not, nominations are closed. LGCCA, current members are Mayor Volk and Jerry Smith. Are there nominations for the LGCCA?
Madam Mayor, I move the City Council appoint Councilmembers Mayor Barbara Volk and Debbie Roundtree to the Local Government Committee for Cooperative Action, LGCCA.
Thank you. Mayor Volk and Councilmember Roundtree have been nominated for the LGCCA. Are there further nominations? Not, those nominations are closed. Business Advisory Committee, current member is Jennifer Hensley. Are there nominations for the Business Advisory Committee?
Aye, Madam Mayor, I move that City Council appoint Councilmember Jennifer Hensley to the Business Advisory Committee.
Jennifer Hensley has been nominated, other further nominations? Not, the nominations are closed. Diversity and Inclusion Advisory Committee, it really isn't necessary to make nominations. It specifies in the charter who those people will be. There's no reason to vote on that. Downtown Advisory Committee, currently Lindsey Simpson. Are there any nominations for Downtown Advisory Committee?
Madam Mayor, I move that City Council appoint Councilmember Debbie Roundtree to the Downtown Advisory Board.
Okay. Councilmember Roundtree has been nominated for the Downtown Advisory Board. Are there further nominations? Not, nominations are closed. Environmental Sustainability Board. Currently, Councilmember Simpson is on that. Are there any nominations for the Environmental Sustainability Board?
Madam Mayor, I move the City Council appoint Councilmember Simpson to the Environmental Sustainability Board.
Thank you. Councilmember Simpson has been nominated for the Environmental Sustainability Board. Are there further nominations? Not, those nominations are closed. Let's skip Tree Board for right now and go down to the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee. Mr. Miller was that representative with the alternate as Mr. Connet? Is there anyone who would like to make a nomination for Water Sewer Advisory Committee? Can you do that, Chair?
Yeah.
Madam Mayor, I move that City Council appoint Councilmember Jerry Smith to the Water Sewer Advisory Council and further move that City Council appoint John Connet as the alternate.
Okay. Councilmember Smith has been nominated for Water Sewer Advisory Council with Mr. Connet as the alternate. Are there further nominations? Not, those nominations are closed. Right, we have heard all the nominations. We will vote on them as a whole. Ms. Hensley?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Simpson?
Aye.
Ms. Roundtree?
Aye.
And Mayor votes aye. So all those appointments are made. Then we have the Tree Board, there is a suggestion. Councilmember Roundtree would like to stay on that board as well. But as a City Councilmember, she cannot be in that particular position. But one possibility would be that we would ask her to be a non-voting liaison to the Tree Board so she could continue to be there and report back to us. If that is in agreement, then?
Aye.
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 All right, since it's consensus, if everyone's in agreement. Ms. Hensley, you're in agreement too?
Yes.
All right. Then we will go ahead with that one as well. All right, well, we are officially organized. Now we can get to our agenda. Oh, good. Consent agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to have moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda so it can be discussed? Or if not, a motion to approve the items that are listed on the consent agenda?
Madam Mayor, I move the City Council approve the consent agenda as presented.
All right, is there any discussion? Not, we will vote on approving the consent agenda. Ms. Roundtree?
Aye.
Ms. Simpson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Hensley?
Aye.
And the Mayor votes aye. So all that has been taken care of. Now, we have a presentation for Kwanzaa. And I don't see, is it, oh! Right there, looking right at you. It's a problem with masks. All right. This is a proclamation for Kwanzaa Week. Whereas Kwanzaa Week was first established by Dr. Malana Karanga, a professor and chairman of African Studies at California State University, who first created Kwanzaa in 1966. Kwanzaa is based on harvest festivals that originated in Africa and the name translates to first fruits of the harvest in the Swagili language. And whereas Kwanzaa is observed annually throughout the world representing family, culture, and heritage with events, observances, and proclamations. And whereas Kwanzaa is celebrated using various symbols associated with harvest and by lighting a kanara, or seven-pronged candle holder that has seven candles. Each candle represents one of these seven principles, which include unity, self-determination, collective responsibility, cooperative economics, purpose, creativity, and faith. And whereas, through each principle, we will recognize the essence of building and reflecting shared values that bind us and celebrate Kwanzaa Week, December 26th to January 1st. This proclamation acknowledges the value of celebrating this cultural week and our commitment to strive to strengthen diversity, inclusion, equity, and opportunity for all. And whereas, Kwanzaa will be celebrated while reflecting on the many blessings and memories over the past year and aspirations for the new year to come. This special week reminds us to recommit ourselves to building a stronger country and overcoming challenges together. Whereas Hendersonville is a vibrant mountain city where the government and citizens work together for a high quality of life and the city acknowledges the value and varied contribution of people of African descent in Hendersonville that they have made and continue to make to the city. Now therefore, I, Barbara Volk, Mayor of the City of Hendersonville, do hereby proclaim the week of December 26th, 2021, to January 1st, 2022, as Kwanzaa Week in the City of Hendersonville, North Carolina. That was requested by Crystal Colley. Thank you for working with us on that. Would you like to say anything?
I would like to say thank you to the City of Hendersonville for what you have done for me. I would like to say thank you to the City of Hendersonville for what you have done for me, as well as other people on my team that represents diversity, that believes in the ideas that I have. So thank you for being one of the mayors in western North Carolina to agree to do a Kwanzaa Week proclamation. This has been a wonderful year, so I could say a lot. But I would just like to say thank you so much.
All right. Okay, we have some public hearings. The, yeah, if you would like to leave, you're welcome to. You don't have to stay for the rest.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, first public hearing is a street closure ordered to close a portion of Beach Street, also known as Richelieu Avenue.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of City Council. As the mayor went over, we did receive a street closure petition. The petition was from Marie H. Flowers, Willie Lee Brown Jr., and the City of Hendersonville to close a portion of Beach Street. The pins, the right-of-way is actually between two properties. It doesn't, it's not going on a property, so it doesn't have its own pin. So it's between those two pins. And the council adopted the resolution of intent in November. Here's a GIS map of the area to be closed. General Statutes 168, 299 outline procedures and provides the city with authority for permanently closing streets and alleys. Whenever there is a proposal to permanently close any street or public alley, the City Council shall first adopt a resolution declaring its intent to close the street or alley and shall set a date for the public hearing. This step was completed at your November 4th, 2021, regular session. At the public hearing to be held at your meeting tonight, any person may be heard on the question of whether the closing would be detrimental to public interest or the property rights of any individual. And here is the street closure plat, if you want to see it as well. I'm happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Tyler, if I may, we, the city will maintain a 20-foot drainage and utility easement in the area of the existing right-of-way, even though you're closing it. We have some drainage work. Mike Huffman is working on to assist with some drainage improvements. So I just wanted to point out that we will maintain a drainage and utility easement at that location.
Any questions? Okay. Madam Clerk, has this public hearing been advertised in accordance with the General Statutes?
Yes, Ma'am.
We will open this public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak regarding this street closure? Anyone who would like to speak? Is there anyone online seeking recognition to speak?
No, ma'am.
Okay, then we will close that public hearing. So, discussion or a vote?
I move that the City Council approves the consent? I move that the City adopts an ordinance permanently closing an unopened or unimproved portion of Beach Street, AKA, what is that, Richland Avenue? Between pins 9578-09-0813 and 9568-99-9737. Petition by Marie H. Flowers, Willie Lee Brown Jr., and the City of Hendersonville.
Is there any discussion? Not, we will vote for the street closure. Those in favor will say aye. Ms. Hensley?
Aye.
We have to do the roll call. Ms. Hensley voted aye. Ms. Roundtree?
Aye.
Ms. Simpson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And Mayor Volk votes aye as well. So that street is closed. Next, we have a standard rezoning, Shepherd Street, P21-59-RZO.
And as Alexandra is coming up, I'd like to introduce our newest planner, Alexandra Hunt. This is the City Council. Welcome to your first meeting.
Thank you so much.
First meeting where you're presenting, I think.
Thank you so much and good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. So staff is in receipt of a standard rezoning application from the City of Hendersonville. The city is both the applicant and the property owner of the subject property, which is located at Zero Shepherd Street, or pin 9578-513579. The site has a total acreage of 2.1 acres. The applicant is requesting to rezone the property from R15 Medium Density Residential to C4 Neighborhood Commercial Zoning District. As a standard rezoning, there is no binding site plan or restriction of uses beyond what is permitted by the zoning ordinance. Additionally, Section 11-6 of the zoning ordinance prohibits an applicant from discussing the specific manner in which they intend to use or develop the property. So this next slide is a vicinity map, just to kind of give you an idea of the location of the property and the surrounding uses. As you can see, the subject property is designated with the yellow star. The, it is, you can see its proximity to Spartanburg Highway and you can see that it's also accessed by both Shepherd Street and Old Spartanburg Road. You can also notice that this property is located in a transitional area where land uses are lowering in intensity as you move east from Spartanburg Highway towards more of those residential areas. I also would like to note that the adjacent parcel to the subject property, which is this Fit Club Inc., is a, I believe is operating as a gym and fitness studio, is Zone C4 Neighborhood Commercial. Next, you'll see some photos that illustrate the existing conditions of the site. It is a vacant, open lot. There are some site trees present that are on the property line between the, acting kind of almost as a border between the adjacent parcel, or neighboring parcel. So the current zoning is R15 Medium Density Residential, which is the predominant use in the area. However, C3 Highway Business and C4 Neighborhood Commercial are also present, with C3 Highway Business on the other side of Old Spartanburg Road. The subject property is adjacent to C4 Commercial Neighborhood Zoning District, which I pointed out previously in the vicinity map, which is that Fit Club Inc. One single-family home does sit directly on the corner of Old Spartanburg Road and Shepherd Street and is surrounded on the rear and side of the property by the subject property. Parcels to the south are Zone County's Community Commercial. The proposed zoning is C4 Neighborhood Commercial Zoning District. The purpose of this zoning district is to provide for the most frequent daily needs of residents in an immediate neighborhood. The subject property sits within close proximity to the The subject property sits within close proximity to the intersection of Old Spartanburg Road and Shepherd Street, which serves as a node where neighborhood-scale commercial uses or compatible public facilities may be located in close proximity to residential uses. So the future land use map, or the Comprehensive Plan's Future Land Use Map designates this area as, or the site, as High Intensity Neighborhood. One of the main goals of High Intensity Neighborhood designation is to encourage low-maintenance, high-density housing that supports neighborhood and regional activity centers, and provide a transition between commercial and single-family development. Secondary recommended land uses include, um, public and institutional uses, offices and retail along thoroughfares and recreational amenities. A relevant development guideline is the placement of higher-density uses to, close to boulevards and major thoroughfares, and/or adjacent to neighborhood and regional activity centers, which, as you can see, are in proximity to this site. The subject property is also located in proximity to an activity node, which is indicated by the dashed line here. Activity nodes are high-density, pedestrian-friendly, community focal points that encourage a mixing of neighborhood or regional retail and act as a satellite nodes of downtown. So, staff analysis found that the proposed zoning is supported by the Comprehensive Plan. The site is in a priority infill area. It is in proximity of an activity node. The subject property is adjacent to an existing C4 zoning district, and the proposed zoning allows for the incentivization of infill development and the need for additional opportunities to provide for the frequent and daily needs of the residents in the surrounding neighborhoods. Planning Board recommended approval of the rezoning, finding that the map amendment is consistent with the 2030 Comprehensive Plan, that the rezoning is compatible with the surrounding land uses, and is reasonable and in the public's interest to approve the application because it will advance the goals related to the Comprehensive Plan, and the motion passed unanimously. So I'll leave it open for any questions.
Questions? Okay, thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, has this public hearing been advertised in accordance with general statutes?
Yes, Mayor.
We will open this public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this rezoning on Shepherd Street? Anyone who wishes to speak? Okay, who would come forward? And again, state your name and address for the clerk's record.
Good evening, council. All right, I always try to keep this professional. Today, it's, it's personal. I personally am in pain over your decision about Half Moon Heights, and...
Okay, this, this public hearing is in regard to...
That's right, and this is about that.
A different issue.
That's correct. No, it's all connected, and this is part of the point. Um, I have lost my faith in this governing body. This is officially an abusive relationship. There is gaslighting, broken promises, violence against the land, against the animals, and a complete lack of empathy. The only glimmer of hope I see here is newly-elected council member Roundtree, and Mr. Smith's vote of conscience. Other than that, I see a whole bunch of white privilege, a whole bunch of white privilege, and it is out of control. And I am upset, and I am angry, and I don't think anything will be done about it. You had a project presentation meeting two years ago. I followed up to find out where my feedback has been, and it cannot be found. Have you seen what's happened across the street from Shepherd Street, where you're looking to rezone this? Have you seen, the image that you showed us actually was an old image, um, with the star on the map of where it is, and if you pull that image up again, you'll see that across the street it's shown as a green space. It is no longer a green space. That land has been decimated. They have completely destroyed all the trees and the environmentally sensitive parcel that is connected to a natural greenway that this land is also connected to. So the map you used is incorrect. It does not show the wildlife greenway. The goal number six of the Comprehensive Plan once again has been ignored and was not even mentioned here, and that is in the goal of preserving the environment. I have been told over and over again the council will do whatever they want, that they do not listen to the citizens, that they don't care, and I didn't used to believe that. But after today, my heart is hurting, and I am upset, and I have lost my faith in this governing body, and you need to search your soul because we are experiencing the loss of our natural world, and we're trying to tell you and wake up before it's too late. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in regard to this rezoning? Is there anyone online?
No, ma'am.
Seeking recognition? Okay, thank you. And we will close this public hearing. Counsel, discussion or a motion?
Um, I do think it's probably fair to point out that we own this piece of land, and this is where the fire station is supposed to go. So the purpose of the rezoning is to allow us to put the fire station there. It's not to build houses or anything like that, but if we want to build the fire station, we have to rezone it first. That's the purpose of this.
That's correct. Thank you. Any further discussion or a motion?
Madam Mayor, um, I move the City Council adopt an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the City of Hendersonville, changing the zoning designation of the subject property pin 9578-51-3579 from R15 Medium Density Residential to C4 Neighborhood Commercial, based finding that the rezoning is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's Future Land Use Map and designation of High Density Neighborhood, and that the rezoning is reasonable in the public interest for the following reasons. Um, that it is reasonable and in the public interest because it will, um, advance the goals related to our Comprehensive Plan, and the rezoning is compatible with the surrounding land uses.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Not? Those in favor of this rezoning on Shepherd Street? Ms. Henley?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Simpson?
Aye.
Ms. Roundtree?
Aye.
Mayor Volk?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, the next is a Conditional Zoning District Site Plan Amendment, Landings of Flat Rock, and I think there are some modifications on this one. Is that correct?
Sorry, I didn't catch that question. What was?
Yeah, there's some, some changes...
There is, and I'll, I'll highlight those in my presentation, absolutely.
Okay.
Uh, the city is in receipt of an application for a Conditional Zoning District Amendment from Carolina Commercial Contractors LLC for the Landings of Flat Rock Project. The, the pin for this property is 9588-104337. As you'll see, the existing and proposed zoning will remain the same. It is an amendment to the site plan itself. Uh, the proposed amendment is to allow the subject property to be subdivided into two parcels. The applicant is also requesting a height exemption from City Council in accordance with Section 5-14-6.5, and I'll go over the height exemption in more detail later on in the presentation. So the site, the site plan for, uh, the site plan amendments to the Conditional Zoning District are the only items that are under review tonight, so any new conditions would have to be related to the proposed amendment itself. Um, the total acreage of the site is 8.449 acres. Uh, the use has not changed. It's still proposed to be a contri, contri care facility, and the project details is that it's a 153-bed development. I will also mention that if subdivided, the two parcels will still be considered a single development in accordance with Section 7-12 Aggregation in the zoning ordinance. Both parcels will be tied to the approved site plan and the approved list of uses and conditions for the total site. Uh, the site is off South Allen Road. It is in close proximity to Blue Ridge Community College. It is across the street from Four Seasons, Four Seasons Hospice, and is near the Elizabeth House as well. It is close to I-26 and the Upper Road Corridor interchange. There's a lot of commercial uses along that interchange, as well as, um, adult care and residential uses and institutional. These are some of the existing conditions of the site. The top-left picture shows from, shows the viewpoint from South Allen Road. The picture on the top-right shows some of the existing, or shows the existing tree line on the northern property boundary, and the bottom picture shows the view from the backside of property towards South Allen Road. A neighborhood compatibility meeting was required for this project since it is a CZD amendment. That meeting was held on September 28, 2021. The location was in this room and on Zoom. Uh, some of the topics that were discussed were the ownership of the property, the management of the property, and also traffic issues related to the development. Uh, that meeting was not heavily attended. So as you'll see, the current and proposed zoning will be the same. Like I mentioned earlier, this is just changing the site plan attached to the CZD rather than rezoning from the existing CZD. So it will remain planned residential development Conditional Zoning District. And as you'll see to the south, there is also a recently-approved PRD CZD in the area. So future land use, uh, the 2030 Comprehensive Plan's Future Land Use Map designates this parcel as Regional Activity Center. Parcels located to the north, east, and south are also designated Regional Activity Center. This future land use designation is specifically concentrated in this area due to its proximity to I-26 and is intended for community and regional retail sales and services, restaurants, and multifamily residential and offices. So this is a blown-up picture of the, uh, proposed site plan for tonight. The layout itself has not changed from what was approved in December of 2020. I will, um, just highlight some of the main topics that were previously approved on the site plan. So the site plan shows a 32,000-square-foot, 58-bed, one-story assisted-living facility, and that is the building to the south right there. And also an 85,000-square-foot, 95-bed, um, three-story independent living facility, which is on the northern property boundary. Uh, the developer, or the development would have two access points, both of which would be off South Allen Road. Uh, the applicant will be providing stormwater maintenance or management plans to our engineering department, and be, will be required to have a stormwater maintenance, uh, system in place. So the modifications that you are reviewing tonight is this dark line right here. They're proposing to subdivide the, I guess I can, yeah, um, this dark line right here that shows where the proposed subdivision will occur. Uh, parcel one, which is the independent living facility to the north, would be 3.54 acres, and the assisted living to the south would be 4.53 acres. Uh, the developer will provide an easement along this subdivision for maintenance of both the porticoes of each building. And let's go to the building height. So as I mentioned, the developer is requesting a height exemption from, uh, NPRD, so anytime a building is proposed to go over 35 feet, they have to request a height exemption from City Council. So the independent living facility at the top, or the northern property boundary, uh, now granted, this is both independent living facilities, so it's not actually showing the assisted living except for that little snip right there. So this is the building to the north. Uh, they are exceeding the maximum height of 35 feet. They are proposing that the top of the building would not exceed 50 feet in height, and that is what our ordinance, um, Ms. Beaker has updated the ordinance, which I believe is in front of y'all, that reflects this change and adds more clarification of what's actually allowed as a part of that exemption. So that should be in an updated ordinance in front of you. I believe it's highlighted.
Okay.
Okay. So whenever you request a height exemption, you have to meet certain criteria. So, the main criteria that, um, is considered is the building will not block sunlight from adjacent properties between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. from the months of October 1st to May 1st. Um, the developer has provided a sun study, which is shown on your screen here. This is the building. This is the proposed shadow at, on October 1st. So you can see up here is the property line, and down here is the other property lines. As you'll see, none of the shadows associated with this building are proposed to leave the property and cast a sha, cast a shadow on any adjacent properties. Okay, and there's more information in your staff report about the other criteria for, um, height exemption. It appears that the engineering or the developer is meeting all the criteria in order to grant a height exemption. So, the proposed site plan was reviewed by our Development Review Committee. The proposed site plan is compliant with the zoning ordinance, and the proposed use/site plan is compliant with the Comprehensive Plan. Staff does not recommend any standalone conditions for this amendment. Uh, the Tree Board did not review this Conditional Zoning District Site Plan Amendment since it does not have an impact on trees or the landscaping plan. Uh, Planning Board did recommend the, or did recommend the City Council adopt an ordinance amending the approved site plan associated with this CZD for this subject property, and that motion passed unanimously.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Was that motion based on 40 feet or 50 feet?
So they actually do not grant the height exemption, um, City Council...
I mean, when they were voting on it, so they didn't know whether or not the, the building was going to be 15 feet taller when they voted on it?
So they, they were aware of the height exemption when they made their, um, motion, yes.
So they knew the building was going to be 50 feet tall, not 40 feet tall?
Yes, they were aware that they were asking for a, um, height exemption. That is correct.
Okay, all right.
And I'm happy to answer any other questions y'all may have.
Any questions? Thank you. Madam Clerk, has this public hearing been advertised in accordance with general statutes?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, is there anyone who wishes to speak to this, um, Conditional Zoning District Plan Amendment, the change in height? Yes, you would come forward and give your name and address for the clerk's record, please.
Madam Mayor, council members, my name's Corey Mabus from Sanford, North Carolina, 1600 Colon Road. I'm with Carolina Commercial Contractors, have been leading this development from the beginning, and here to speak on behalf of why we're asking for this amendment. Uh, as you can see, the site plan has not changed, the ownership has not changed. Uh, we, we intend, uh, the ownership group is still going to maintain and manage and operate both facilities. The only reason why we've come forward asking for this amendment is due to financing purposes solely. Um, it, we've just been able to secure financing for each of them separately due to HUD requirements, uh, so that's the reason why we've asked for that. So if y'all have any questions for us, be happy to answer them.
I mean, you are asking for a taller building, correct?
The building has not changed since the beginning. This, this requirement was not asked of us when we first came before City Council.
What requirement was not asked of you?
The committee sort of hired, any, anything addressing height. I mean, the building plans from day one has not changed.
So, the, uh, the height was not, uh, picked up in the original review. So had they not requested the, um, change for the property boundary, we would have been bringing this back for a height exemption anyhow. It was a three-story building. Staff reviewed a three-story building. It was only in discussions when we were reviewing this second round that, uh, it was established that they needed more than the 35-foot limit that's in the zoning district.
Right, so I mean, we, we gave a permit for a 35-foot building.
Right.
Correct?
Correct, yes.
Which they didn't catch, because that's what our rules are.
Exactly.
Okay, so...
But, but the original plan showed 50, and we just didn't pick it up?
The, the original plan showed a three-story building. It didn't actually specifically discuss what the roof line would be. So the, the roof line is what's really coming into play here, and it's, you know, a contractor gets... could speak more to why the three-story building requires that roof line, but when we saw three-story, we didn't pick up that that would exceed 35 feet. And it wasn't specifically highlighted otherwise.
But the sun study we saw was based on 50?
Sun study is based on what they are proposing now. That's correct. The sun study was required when we recognized that the height was larger or higher than the 35, which is outlined in the P R D standards. You'll recall, you also reviewed a sun study for water leaf, which is adjacent to this site.
Thank you, Luke, for explaining that.
Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding this? You will come forward. Again, you have to give your name and address to the clerk's record.
Thank you. Lynn Williams, 309 Chadwick Avenue. So I see an ongoing trend here, annex land just to allow its decimation. Are we going to allow the decimation and destruction of all our natural resources? I watch people as they laugh and clap and shake hands. The staff cashes their paychecks while the long-term residents mourn the death of our beloved land. You say there isn't money to buy new land for the fire station downtown to protect historic part at Boyd Park yet.
Would you address this particular issue?
Yes.
Height of this building?
I see. It it is kind of all connected. And yet the, okay, and I'll move on to the next point. If you put the three parcels together, this parcel plus water leaf land, that water leaf development, and then the other rezoning that's on the docket today, that's an entire region, a huge region of environmentally sensitive areas and animal habitats. I think I can get it. That will be decimated. I appreciate that these homes are going to be for older residents and for independent living. I'm just tired and it's all being destroyed. I really don't have respect for the excuse that you didn't notice the height. You're going to tear down trees and build four-story, three-story apartments right next door. It's just, when is it going to stop? I'm not here for personal gain. It's literally just, it's about what's right. It's about what we've had for generations and what we're trying to leave for our future generations. This is humiliating and embarrassing, but I stay awake at night wondering what's going to happen to this space that we all love. Piece by piece, part by part, it's being destroyed. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this site plan amendment? Anyone online?
No, ma'am.
Okay, and we will close this public hearing. Council, discussion or motion?
The only discussion I just would like to share is I just struggle with how we miss this. So I just would like to ask that, I remember when we went over this before, that these types of prizes, that we try not to miss them again.
Anyone care to make a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move city council adopt an ordinance amending the approved site plan associated with the planned residential development conditional zoning district for the subject property, pin 9588-12-4337 on the official zoning map of the city of Hendersonville based on the site plan submitted by the applicant. Finding that the zoning amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan's future land use map and that the rezoning is reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons, this development is within a priority growth area as designated in the comprehensive plan, and the development provides additional senior housing options for the city of Hendersonville.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Not, we will vote. Ms. Simpson?
Aye.
Ms. Roundtree?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Hensley?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. So that rezoning is taken care of. The next, also a standard rezoning for zero, South Allen Road, pin 9588-22-1126, P-2160 RZO. And this one, I think we're going to open the public hearing and then continue it. Does staff any have any presentation before we do that?
So I believe that we intended to present at the continued hearing unless you prefer otherwise.
Yeah. All right. So we will open the public hearing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we will go ahead and do that. Madam Clerk, has this public hearing been advertised in accordance with general statutes?
Yes, Mayor.
It has. We will open this public hearing. And is there a motion to postpone this public hearing to what, then our next January meeting? Is that the?
Do we need a date for that?
Okay.
Madam Mayor, our motion that we post, continue. Continue this public hearing until the next regularly scheduled council meeting in January.
Okay. I'm going to give you a date.
That is June, excuse me, January, January the 6th.
January the 6th.
Okay.
At 5:45.
Yes, thank you. Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion? If not, those in favor are or opposed either way to this continuing of the public hearing. Ms. Hensley?
I'm I'm voting aye, we can continue it, I think. I got confused by what you said, I'm sorry.
Yeah, either either voting aye or no on continuing the public hearing?
Aye.
Sorry. Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Hensley?
She's already voted.
Do you mean me?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Simpson?
Aye.
Losing track of which order I'm going in. Roundtree?
Aye.
And mayor votes aye. Yeah. I should do it the same every time and then I wouldn't get confused.
If anyone would be able to catch us off guard.
All right, last one is a zoning text amendment supplementary standards for private clubs, P-2158 Z T A.
Good evening, council. Welcome, Councilwoman Roundtree, Madam Mayor. Good to see everyone this evening. Yes, we have a a request, an application from Castle Blanca Cigar Bar to change our zoning ordinance as it relates to the supplementary standards for private clubs. Currently, the supplementary standards, these are, these are the standards that have to be met in order to be granted as special use. Special uses are granted by the Board of Adjustments. The current standards are that no private club shall be located within a 600-foot radius of another private club and that the parking lot for such facility shall be adequately lighted to provide security. These special uses are currently permitted with approval by from the B O A in the C-1, C-2, C-3, C M U, I-1, P and D, and the urban residential zoning districts. City of Hendersonville locally has a definition for private club. It is essentially a a group that is requires membership that is not open to the general public. There's a relationship between private clubs in Hendersonville and what the state regulates as far as private clubs. Recently, the state in 2020 separated out for-profit and nonprofit establishments. And so for-profit private bars were newly created and separated out from under the definition of private clubs, which private clubs now are nonprofit establishments. These establishments are required to be private and and have memberships if they if the total of their receipts in food and non-alcoholic beverage sales is less than 30% of their total receipts. That is a state rule, A B C rule. We currently have three in in Hendersonville that have special use permits. Southern App Brewery had one initially, but other changes in state law made it where they did not, they no longer were required to maintain that private club status. These would all be considered private bars now under state rules, but they're considered private clubs under our current statute.
Hold on a second.
Yes.
The membership requirement you just talked about, that applies to which of those? The state definition or our definition?
The state requires that they be private memberships, and once they hit that status, then they fall under our definition locally, and then they have to get a special use permit.
But the ones you just put up there, you don't have to have a membership to go through access, I don't think, do you?
You, so so you may be correct. They, maybe they did at one time. This is the list that was provided to me that these are the people who received special use permits for private clubs. Why exactly they needed to, I don't know the details of each of these individual establishments. And I will say, there's been a number of questions about a number of different establishments that aren't on this list throughout the city that may fall under one of our definitions or appears to meet the state's definition, and I and I don't have information on all those individual establishments, but very, very good question.
But at least on paper, they're supposed to have a membership requirement.
They, there would be some reason at some point when they were being established that they would have felt they needed a special use permit for a private club.
No, I meant the definition on paper at least says they're supposed to have a membership requirement.
Yes.
I'm not talking about these.
Well, and it it says that it's not just generally open to the public, and what that exactly looks like at each establishment, I don't know.
Gotcha, okay.
For a little color there, Jerry, and not to step in here, but the A B C and when you read some of what they talk about as what qualifies as a membership, that that could be as much as paying a cover charge when you go to.
Thank you for explaining that, all right.
Good point and good question.
Thank you.
So I mentioned the zoning districts where it's currently permitted as special use permits. This map shows those highlighted in the the green color, green-blue color. You can see that it's it's centered around downtown and of course, our corridors that come into the city from the north and south and from the east. As you zoom in on downtown, you can really see the the C-1 district, the C M U and the C, the C-2 that are concentrated concentrated around downtown and the Seventh Avenue District in particular. Taking a look at an example of this, this particular site is where we have one of our special use permits, the only one that is in downtown. This is what a 600-foot radius around that parcel looks like. This is shown, this is being measured from the parcel boundary because we do not have a specific standard for how we make this 600-foot radius measurement. That was part of the discussion that came up as we were looking at this. If this was just centered around the establishment that has the permit, that radius would be slightly smaller. You can see the impact of that radius on downtown. It covers a lot of our Main Street for one special use permit currently. Our, going to our comprehensive plan, we have a couple of things that touch on this. Private clubs are not specifically mentioned. We do talk about updating our zoning code for to enable compatible infill projects. We have specific goals for our downtown core, which covers our Seventh Avenue District and highlights entertainment uses. It talks about primary land uses being restaurants, arts, cultural and entertainment establishments. Those are probably the closest land uses that are mentioned in our comprehensive plan that relate to private clubs. Private clubs are closely related to restaurants that have bars that serve liquor. Under our cultural and historic resources chapter, it states to promote downtown as Hendersonville's central gathering place and focal point for niche retailers and entertainment, cultural, and civic uses. So this particular application to to remove these standards went through a series of committee meetings, and each committee led up to the recommendation that came to the planning board and the downtown advisory board. First was the planning board's legislative committee. To summarize, they essentially felt that the impact of the 600-foot radius was was too great, that it had, it was too limiting for other opportunities. They did note that in our Seventh Avenue in downtown, we have a very dense urban form where a lot of businesses are really close together. And in our other districts, C-3 and I-1, those uses are further spread apart. And so that that 600-foot radius is less of an impact out in the other districts. So they really honed in on downtown and Seventh Avenue as being the most impacted by this rule. The economic vitality committee also met, they also were in favor of less standards and really talked about deferring to state oversight and state standards and us kind of staying out of the way of it locally. Lot of good discussion about, you know, where this came from and and what it means and how it's being applied. And they made, they were essentially in favor of a reduction similar to what the legislative committee recommended with some slight differences. And so this, these changes that are shown on this slide were what was presented to the planning board. These recommendations came from both the legislative committee of the planning board and the economic vitality committee. And the first recommendation was within the C-1 and C-2 specifically, that no private club shall be located within a 300-foot radius of another private club when located on the same street. So the impact of this would be that if you're located on Main Street, Main Street blocks are 300 feet in length and going just the grid downtown, 300-foot blocks. So the idea was that if you're on Main Street, you could not have another establishment on either side of Main Street unless you were 300 feet apart. So that would push you one per block on one side of the street or the other. A 300-foot radius was another recommendation that would in, back up, the first recommendation would allow Castle Blanca to get a special use permit because they are on a different street than the Tobacco Merchant, which is nearby. If they just did a 300-foot radius, measured as it, we get down to the measurement here, that it would be measured from the center of the main entrance of one establishment to the center of the main entrance of the proposed establishment. Measuring with a 300-foot radius, they would not, that'd be a straight line from one door to the other, it does not hit 300 feet. It's 189 feet. The economic vitality committee had another tweak on this, which was that the distance be measured by the shortest walking route from the main entrance of one to the main entrance of another. That would also put Castle Blanca under 300 feet. They'd be at 218 feet. The, another spin on this was that they would just be permitted one per block face. So the difference between that and the 300 feet on one street would be that you could have one on one block of Main Street and across the street on the other block face, you could have another on a side, on Fourth Avenue, you could have another, every block face within the C-1 and C-2 would be permitted a private club. So each of these greatly reduces the 600-foot radius. They did however hold that in all other zoning districts outside of the C-1 and C-2, that there would be maintained a 600-foot radius. And then they they kept in the the standard for lighting for security. So that is what went to planning board. Planning board took that and made the following recommendation. They had a good discussion about it and kind of carried this, this idea that there was, didn't seem to be a good basis for the restrictions, that there was not a desire any longer to be overly restrictive to private clubs or private bars and that we should just eliminate the standards. And by eliminating those standards, you then eliminate, for a special use to be listed as a special use, it has to have standards. So if you eliminate the standards, you're redesignating it as a permitted use. And so the proposal was to redesignate private clubs in the zoning districts where they are currently permitted as a special use, they would, they would be redesigned as permitted by right rather than as a special use. permitted by right rather than as a special use. And so that recommendation is what is before you this evening. That recommendation, the Planning Board met on November 8th. Next day, Downtown Advisory Board met, and they concurred with the Planning Board's finding. And with that, I'll answer any questions, and, and Ms. Speaker, I don't know if you had any comments on this related to the structure of the motion as it related to the applicant's request and how they choose to, we can come to, come back to that maybe after some discussion, but I didn't know if you had anything to add on that.
I'm not sure what you're asking.
So the applicant specifically requested that all standards be removed.
Mm-hmm.
If City Council were to change the zoning text in some other way, would they have to address the application specifically and then make a, a different proposal in their motion?
In my opinion, they would first look at the written ordinance that's proposed and, and modify that, and then vote on that modified ordinance. Does that, does that answer your question?
I think so, and then we can come back to it if it becomes an issue.
Okay. Any questions?
Yes.
Yeah. Go ahead.
So I have a question. When you defined a block, what is our definition of a block, a city block? Is there a co-definition of a city block?
I.
You mean in the zoning?
Do, yeah, do we have the zoning?
Well, whatever affects this.
Um, I, so the reason I ask. I'm gonna wager that we do not have a definition for block in our zoning ordinance.
Okay, well then, so the reason I ask this is behind Casablanca, there is a street, North Wall Street. Is that the end of that block?
That's a good question.
Yeah, it's a legitimate question. I believe when we were discussing it, we weren't thinking that alleys would count.
That's correct.
Okay, but it says street right here, I'm looking at it. So is it considered an, is it a street or not?
So classification of streets would be a good point to clarify, that service alleys or specific streets would not be part of the calculation of a block face.
Okay, well, I'm not saying, I, I, I would like to include it as the calculation of a city block. For me personally.
So that those, so any right-of-way would break up the, would start a new block.
Okay, so I'm looking at Wall Street, and then the other side, I'm looking at Edward Street, and then I've got Edward Street again flowing all the way down. And then we have Wall Street that literally flows almost the entire distance of Main Street. It does stop right there at the bank. So that's why I'm asking, obviously, I'm, you know, I, I am in favor of the block rule, but.
So my.
I'm, I'm gonna complicate something, I think. Where is Casablanca?
Right here.
Right. I think Speaker knows.
Casablanca's right there.
I do.
On the wrong block.
I don't know.
Federal building, there it is. Casablanca is right here.
Right here. Right around the corner from.
Because.
Tobacco Merchant.
There's, there's, there's a, we have our own question about whether that portion of Wall Street, it's a 10-foot alley, and if you go back toward 3rd Avenue, the roadway, this becomes a sidewalk, the roadway slid, slides over into the parking lot, so, I mean, I hate to, there is some question whether it.
I can tell you people drive on that street every day.
They, they don't, the alleyway is actually a sidewalk in that area. It's not, they don't drive on the sidewalk. They, they move over into a private, so I don't, that just complicates it a little bit, I know, but.
I do have one thought to add to this, is that the buildings that face Main Street, they, almost 100% of them back up all the way to that alley. So another use or on the side street would not begin, there's only a few spots really along 4th Avenue and 5th Avenue West, couple spots at the, on 1st Avenue, like West 1st, a few on the east side that actually face the side street, but all those begin after that alley. So there isn't much of an opportunity for a, you know, a, a private club to be between Main Street and the alley, and then another one because of the way that our buildings are structured and laid out.
I understand.
Okay.
I know. I just think, I like the block rule that the Economic Vitality Committee suggested, and I'm trying to expand the definition of a block. In this case, it would allow Casablanca, if we had the block rule, and North Wall Street was the end of the block and the beginning of the next block, it would work.
Yeah, I believe staff's opinion is that the block face on, that Casablanca's on, on North Main Street would be one block, the block face that Tobacco Merchant on 4th would be another block. It wouldn't need the separation of the alley to be considered a separate block.
Right, that's the block face rule. In other words, you could have four on a block, here, 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 and here, because they're all facing different directions.
Right.
That's not one, I'm, I'm saying just one per quadrant, or.
Oh, one per block.
One per square or rectangle. That's why I'm asking if, what the definition of a block is. Fun little geography question.
Can you go back to the slide that had a bunch of words on it, and it said like the block rule, the 300-foot rule, the whatever the last one was, that? Um, I, I find the whole private club thing a very antiquated law, but I do understand that there are concerns about just opening it up and making it a permitted use. But I also feel that the 300 feet and the block rule could still be a little bit too restrictive, because then you have Casablanca, and then stores across the street wouldn't be able to have another one. And for me, that's a big enough space to have a different establishment. So I kinda like this third one, that says there's only one per block face. So technically, you could still get, you would still have four. But then at least you'd only, so there'd be two, if you were looking at Main Street and you were going by block, there would just be, you could have two in each block as opposed to just one. But I kinda feel like that's the best compromise.
Um, so, I'm sorry, when you're finished, I want to ask another question.
Go ahead.
Right, so if that were the case, then what she said, I mean, what Lindsay said is, so we look, a block now is a square, and you can have a club that affronts on any of the edges of the square. Right, and the nature of the buildings as they are, it almost by definition limits it somewhat, because there are not buildings that face.
I think, I, I think that the Poe House may be.
Lou, you think, Lou, could you come up, please?
Yeah. I, I believe that the Poe House may be the only retail that's prior to the alley coming from Main, because typically, the construction of those buildings, they, they're backing up to the surface, service alley. And that may not be, trying to think if there's.
But they're also not a private club, because they serve.
No, I'm just talking about possible retail, commercial spaces that, you know, would be accessible if you were to split the block at the alley. I, I would say like from a traditional urban forum perspective, the block, it, it does not break at the alley. You know, alleys are sort of a recognized service element for.
Gotcha.
May I get some clarification? This is Jen.
Yes.
So, um, the recommended motion includes no restrictions, is that correct?
That's correct.
I am inclined to have no restrictions. I think that it is, it's not very business-friendly. I also think that we should allow these private clubs and special use, I guess, establishments to essentially, I, I don't see there being so many that we would have a problem. That's like how the market kinda works those things out on their own. Also, the private clubs that are currently in town or, and are operating as private clubs have been very good to the community. They've been very active and engaged in many of our nonprofit events. I know Tales in Town and many of the Humane Society events, they are, several of them have opened up their doors graciously, and so I just, my personal opinion, and I am, I'm not for any restrictions. I agree with Lindsay, the laws around these establishments are very antiquated, and I hope that our General Assembly does work on updating some of these laws so that we have, you know, less of that type of thing to deal with here. But that's just my personal opinion, and that's, I just wanted to say that. And it sounds like from the recommendations from the two bodies who were working on this particular project, their recommendations were also to have no restrictions, and were those unanimous votes as well on those?
So those committees, they gave a consensus, they did not vote like you would tonight. They had a discussion and came to a consensus. They were each to reduce the standards. I believe that the, yes, the two boards, Planning Board and the Downtown Board, vote, both recommended no restrictions, that all restrictions be removed. The committees kind of walked towards that, but those at the committee level.
I like the four-facing rule. I can live with that, whatever we call that rule that was up there a few minutes ago. But I'll, I'll admit, I'm not gonna vote for just removing our restrictions.
Councilmember Smith, is that just for the downtown area, or is that for?
I think it's number three, right?
Yes, but certain areas of our city don't have blocks.
Right, I got it. So I think in, in absence of that, don't we have the 600-foot rule in place? Isn't that right?
Yes, but the proposal on the table is to remove them everywhere.
I know that, but I think number three would affect those zoning districts, and I would assume the rest of the zoning districts would still operate under the 600-foot rule.
Under B, okay.
Yeah, 'cause that forward each block face is just for C1.
C2.
And C2.
Yeah?
Yes.
Okay. And we probably need to, if, whatever circles we draw, we probably need to designate like where the circle starts. That's probably something that needs to go in an ordinance somewhere.
I mean, I would be okay if we changed it in all the other zoning districts, districts to 300 feet instead of 600 feet. If we don't wanna go to no restrictions and making a permitted use. But I also agree with Jen, that I think as a business owner, I would probably not open up right next door to another similar establishment that would be my competitor.
Well, this is a public hearing, but the, open the public hearing, and then if there's any comment, and then we can do some more discussion after that, if that's agreeable.
Mm-hmm.
Madam Clerk, has this public hearing been advertised in accordance with general statutes?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, so we'll open this public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak regarding this zoning text amendment? Anyone who would like to speak?
There's somebody.
Yes. If you would, if we had come to the microphone and give your name and address, please, for the clerk's record.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. Congratulations to those that just got elected. There are those that do appreciate your public service. I did two terms on Asheville City Council. I know the job that you have, and if your heart's in the right place, you do it for the right reason, you can sleep good at night. Nobody, everybody's not gonna agree with you, but y'all seem to do a good job of discussing, and that's the one thing I want to say, is that from your city manager to your clerk, Ms. Angela Reese, and from dealing with Matthew Manley, nothing but first-class service and easy to work within your city to get this matter, and we thankful for it to be before you. Also appreciate all the discussions that went on with your economic committee, Planning Board, and your downtown committee, where everybody contributed to the discussion.
Okay, and if you could give your name and address for the.
My name's Jean Ellison, attorney out of Asheville, North Carolina, representing Casablanca.
Thank you.
But just wanted to say, say that, just thank you for the process, and thank you for the way you deal with the public. My experience has been excellent, and I would just say to you that the recommendations, the conversation, I think is consistent with your goal of creating a great tax base for the city of Hendersonville. You have a great city, and I just hope that the, the changes are modified and approved in accordance with the recommendation of your three committees and your board, your Planning Board.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I tell you, I went to lunch a healthy man today. I stood up and something went wrong, and I was at the chiropractor, but I had to be here, so he got me here, but he said I must have twisted something, but I tell you, you know, it's also what my granddaughter say, "You're getting old, Papa."
Happens to all of us. Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this zoning text amendment? Is there anyone online requesting recognition?
Yes, Mayor, Caroline Gunther, you've been unmuted.
All right. Please go ahead.
Am I unmuted?
Yes, you are.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Caroline Gunther, 128 Poplar Loop Drive, Flat Rock, and my business address is 231 North Main Street, Historic Downtown Hendersonville. As the Chair of the Downtown Advisory Board, I just wanted to reemphasize the process of this. It was brought first to the Planning Board in one of their committees. They decided on lower restrictions, and a lot of discussion was had on exactly what the distances were between the private clubs. And then this came to one of the committees for our Downtown Advisory Board, and there was great discussion in that board, a lot of questions asked, which Matt Manley took the time to answer and research. And then we came to a consensus on that committee that we would like no restrictions on this. We think that the law is antiquated, and that there was a reason it was instated in the first place that is no longer necessary in the city of Hendersonville. And then it went back to our Downtown Advisory Board, who also had ample discussion, also agreed that no restrictions were necessary. And then that went back to the full Planning Board, who also determined that no restrictions were necessary for private clubs. So this has been through two of your public boards and two of their committees, and the consensus is that no restrictions are necessary at this time. Fifty years from now, if things change, like they were years ago when this was instated, we could reexamine it. However, in the interest of business now and the conditions in Hendersonville, this is unnecessary to have any restrictions on private clubs. Thank you very much for your time, and lovely to see all of you tonight.
Thank you. Is there anyone else seeking recognition?
No, ma'am.
Okay, no one else here, and we will close that public hearing. Any further discussion or a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move City Council to approve an ordinance amending the official zoning ordinance of the city of Hendersonville, Article XVI, supplementary standards for certain usage, Section 16-4, 16-4-20, private clubs as presented. Finding that the zoning text amendment is consistent with the Comprehensive Chapter IV, Goal CR-IV, and Chapter VIII, Strategy LU-1.1, Action LU-1.1.1, and Goal LU-10, and that the zoning text amendment is reasonable and in the public interest for the following. It encourages reinvestment in commercial real estate within the city of Hendersonville, supporting a sustainable tax base. It reflects adaptation by the city to the changing market trends in entertainment and hospitality, and it will promote additional entertainment, hospitality, and social experiences within the city of Hendersonville's primary entertainment districts.
Okay. All right, is there further discussion?
Just let me make one comment before we vote, and that is, if we were doing whatever you want to call the four-block rule, I mean, the four sides of the block rule, that would be one that I would vote for. But I know that's not the one that's here.
Did you wish to make an amendment?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am.
Mr. Smith, did you want to make an amendment?
To this?
Yes. Or do you, no? Okay. All right. Is there any further discussion? I guess I feel that the Downtown Committees, Planning Board Committees researched this, and I will support their recommendations. Any other discussion? Okay, then we will vote on this. Vote either yes or no. Ms. Hensley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Ms. Simpson?
Yes.
Ms. Roundtree?
No.
Mayor votes yes. The vote is three to two. Is this something we have to vote a second time, or?
You do not.
We do not, okay. Then the motion carries, and the text amendment has been approved. All right, new business. Resolution by the City of Hendersonville City Council authorizing purchase of 2022/2023 Spartan Metro Star Smell Custom Pumper pursuant to NC GS 143-129E3. And I think that has been...
Bless you.
And there's another one coming up under B. So, but we'll start with the first one.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. We are here today to try to get your approval and blessing to move on with purchasing, replacing one of our engines with a Smell, kind of like our new engine that we just replaced last year. So we're coming for y'all to give us the graces to go ahead and continue on moving down that purchase.
And just to add a little more clarity to that, we are, and Justin can correct me, her deputy chief of ward could correct me.
Justin.
If I make mistakes, we're replacing, we're on a 15-year rotation.
Correct.
The engine will serve on the front line for 10 years and then five years in reserve. So this particular engine will be replacing Engine 1. Engine 1 will be 10 years old by the time this one is delivered.
This one would make Engine 1 go to reserve.
Yeah, and so the current engine will go to reserve, and then we will then surplus an older engine that we have.
It's a 2004, both the engine and the tower, both 2004. So we'll get those out of here and surplus those and then get the reserves on there.
So there is a process by which we're trying to make sure the fleet stays, but be responsible.
Yeah, we had a committee from all three, all ranks in the department, all three ships represented. So we've done a lot of homework and put a lot of time invested in this to come with us. Yes, sir.
Ballpark, what is, what is one of these surplus for?
It depends on the, how much it's been used and stuff. I would say maybe $100,000, somewhere around in there, I would think of as a reasonable price for that.
I'm asking because I had a student ask me, and I was like, "I don't know."
Any other questions?
Questions, yeah.
No questions? Okay. Thank you. Discussion or a motion?
Madam, we're just doing A, correct?
Yes, then we can...
Madam Mayor, I move that City Council adopt the resolution by the City of Hendersonville City Council, wait a second. I move that City Council adopt the resolution by the City of Hendersonville City Council, okay, authorizing purchase of 2022/2023 Spartan Metro Star Smell Custom Pumper pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-129E3 as presented.
Is there any discussion? If not, we will vote on this purchase. Ms. Roundtree?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Ms. Simpson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Hensley?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. All right. Got one of them down. Now we have a resolution authorizing purchase of 2022/23 Spartan Gladiator Smell 100-foot mid-mount platform pursuant to General Statute.
All that good fun stuff.
So again, like Mr. Connaught said, this is another one that we're trying to surplus out. We will not keep this as a reserve just because due to the fact of it's a larger apparatus. And currently, our needs are only having one tower. So this truck is, we're going to be replacing a 2004 ladder, Tower 9, that we have downtown currently. And again, we've had a committee, and we're trying to get this before the price increase that they're stating will start January 1. So we're trying to jump on the ball with this one as well and get this ball rolling. And have any, have any questions? I'm here.
Okay. Save money where you can.
Yeah, exactly.
Right. Are there any questions? Not? A, any discussion or a motion?
Do it again. I move that City Council adopt the resolution by the City of Hendersonville City Council authorizing purchase of a 2022/2023 Spartan Gladiator Smell 100-foot mid-mount platform pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-129E3 as presented.
Is there any discussion? Not? We will vote on this one. Ms. Hensley?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Simpson?
Aye.
Ms. Roundtree?
Aye.
And mayor votes aye as well. So that motion also passes. Very good. You can put your order in before the price goes up.
Why do they have such funny names? The names are so funny.
All right, consideration of employee Christmas bonuses.
Mayor vote?
You're going to do this?
Yeah, well, and I'll, I'll introduce it, and then if Councilmember Hensley wants to add anything, she can. Mayor vote, members in the council, Councilmember Hensley inquired about possibility of issuing Christmas bonuses to our employees, and so staff has brought forth a recommendation to issue a $1,000 Christmas bonus to all permanent, full and part-time employees as a reward for outstanding service during the past year, particularly as it relates to the pandemic. And I'll defer to Councilmember Hensley if anything else she wants to add.
No, all I have to add is that we just really value the employees, and we're very, very grateful that you all have stuck with us and that you're hopefully still joining us in the next year. And we know that inflation is hitting your pockets hard, and we hope to be able to lessen that burden on you and your family this Christmas.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any discussion or a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move the City Council authorize city manager to issue a $1,000 Christmas bonus to all permanent, full, and part-time employees as a reward for outstanding service during the COVID-19 pandemic.
Is there any discussion? Not? We will vote on this motion. Ms. Hensley?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Simpson?
100% aye.
Ms. Roundtree?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. All right. Motion passes. Thank you to all the employees for everything they've had to do this year. City Council comments. I think you had some things you wanted to bring.
I do, and it's before 9, and that was going to be my time. If it was after 9, I wasn't going to do it. So here we go.
Okay.
So I'd like to, I'm adding one other thing that came up in discussions today. First, I would like to, for council to consider that we have in our, wherever we have to write it, that on a, an election day, whether it's the primary or the general election, we do not have any city, any committee meetings, no neighborhood compatibility meetings, nothing happens on that day. Because this year, on Election Day, there's a neighborhood compatibility meeting. I just don't think that's good form on Election Day. That's the first recommendation. The second one is that if we're in an odd-number election year, and we have a primary or a general election on Tuesday, and there is a council meeting the following Thursday, that we move that meeting back one week. And I will speak from personal experience, this year, we had a, in October, we had a primary, and there was a council meeting two days later. In November, that was the same thing. And I'd just be quite honest, it was very difficult to get prepared for those meetings personally because it just was. It was still a very competitive election. So my recommendation is, we, if that falls into the calendar, that we push the city council meeting back one week to the following week. My other suggestion is, we buy a pointer that works on that television screen, and we have it up there so that they can point at that one and that one when they're talking to us. And my final one is that we buy a larger screen to go right there. So it's much bigger than what it is now. So it's easier to see for those of us sitting here looking that way. Those are my suggestions. And I'm happy to discuss more if you'd like.
Did you want to make a motion on any of those right now, or would you like to just give us time to think about it and come back in January?
I would, I would like to give you time to think about it, and in January, I'll be prepared to make motions for whatever needs motions. But I wanted to introduce it at this meeting so you could think about it. And you may think of something I haven't thought of between now and then. Like, "Did you think of this?" And I'm like, "Oh, no, I didn't." Okay.
In between now and then, can we look at how much it will be to have a bigger screen? Because my eyes can't see that.
We can look. I'm sitting here looking, just want to make sure we don't block the other cameras. So we'll, we'll look at that. That's the other question, and...
Yes.
See.
Okay.
Just get us all magnifying glasses.
Do we need to vote on getting...
You guys know I can't see, so...
Do we need to vote on getting a pointer that works on both of these?
So...
Because I know somebody has one. Joseph Slaughterback had one, and he pointed right at that one.
Okay, we'll, we'll see what we can find. Go steal his.
Pointer gate.
You can work on that one.
Yeah.
I'll look at it. Sure, I'll look. I'll come up.
All right. Any other comments from council? City managers' report?
Just only bringing your attention to the contingency report that is in your agenda package, showing how we've moved some contingency funds around, and also reminding council that we will, and the public, that we will be canceling our December 22 workshop. We will not be meeting on December, Wednesday the 22nd before Christmas. So that's all that I have to report at this moment. There.
Okay. Thank you. We have appointments to boards and commissions, and I, what I would like to do is the same as we did with, with the other nominations. Take nominations, close them. If there is only one person, one person per vacancy, we would vote on those at one, at one time. And if there are competing candidates, then we could vote on each of those individually. Okay, starting board of adjustment, there is a vacant seat, and we have one applicant, Stefan Grunwald, Board of Adjustment. If anyone would like to make a nomination, please just go ahead.
Madam Mayor, I move that City Council appoint Stefan Grunwald to an unexpired term on the Board of Adjustment ending June 30, 2023.
Are there further nominations for Board of Adjustment? Not? The nominations are closed. Environmental Sustainability Board, a, an at-large seat. We have one applicant, Will Garvey.
Madam Mayor, I move that City Council appoint Will Garvey to an unexpired term at-large on the Environmental Sustainability Board, ending June 30, 2023.
Are there further nominations for Environmental Sustainability Board? Not? Nominations are closed. Historic Preservation, there are three vacancies, and we have nine applicants, including three current members who are willing to serve for a full term. Anyone like to make any nominations here?
Madam Mayor, I nominate Cheryl Jones. Did I just say that?
Mm-hmm. Cheryl Jones?
Because these are all for full terms, aren't they? Yeah.
Yes. Okay, Cheryl Jones has been nominated. Are there further nominations?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to nominate Chris Batista.
Chris Batista has been nominated. Are there further nominations?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to nominate Richard Regan.
Richard Regan? Is that what you said?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Cheryl Jones, Chris Batista, and Richard Regan have been nominated for Historic Preservation. Are there further nominations?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I nominate James Welter.
Okay, James Welter has been nominated. Are there further nominations? Okay. In this case, we do have three vacancies and four people, so we will go ahead and vote on these. We will vote on them in the order of nomination, and if a person receives a majority vote, they are then appointed. The first one is Cheryl Jones. If you are, please vote yes or no on Cheryl Jones. Ms. Hensley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Simpson?
Yes.
Ms. Roundtree?
Yes.
And the mayor votes yes. That is a majority. Cheryl Jones is appointed. Next person nominated was Chris Batista. So we will vote on Chris Batista. Ms. Roundtree?
Yes.
Ms. Simpson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Hensley?
Yes.
And the mayor votes yes. Chris Batista has been appointed to the Historic Preservation Commission. The next person nominated is Richard Regan. We will vote on him. Ms. Hensley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Ms. Simpson?
No.
Ms. Roundtree?
No.
Pardon?
No.
No? Okay. The mayor votes yes on that, but it is a 3-2 vote, and Richard Regan is appointed as the third person for the Historic Preservation Commission.
Oh, he's not.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He's not, he's not appointed.
I'm, he's not appointed.
Okay. Oh, good.
I'm sorry. Thank you for keeping me straight.
All good.
The next person nominated is James Welter. So we will vote on James Welter. Ms. Hensley?
No.
You said no?
Yeah, she said no.
Okay.
She said no.
Okay, that's what I thought. It's a little, little hard to hear. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Simpson?
Yes.
Ms. Roundtree?
Yes.
And the mayor votes yes. So James Welter is reappointed for a full term on the Historic Preservation Commission. So we have Cheryl Jones, James Welter, and Chris Batista. Planning Board, again, we have a lot of people interested in this. There is one vacancy and one vacancy for an unexpired term. Anyone like to make nominations?
Madam, I just ask a question.
Yes.
We need to nominate not only a person, but also a term, correct, to go with it?
Yes, yes. Whether you're appointing them to the full term or the unexpired term.
Right. Gotcha. Okay. Madam Mayor, I nominate Fred Nace for the full term. Frederick Nace, excuse me.
Okay. Frederick Nace has been nominated for the full term. Are there further nominations for How about the unexpired term? Are there any nominations for the unexpired term?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to nominate Diana Lewis for the unexpired term.
Diana Lewis has been nominated for the unexpired term on the Planning Board. Are there further nominations?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to nominate Stuart Glassman.
Stuart Glassman has been nominated for the unexpired term. Are there further nominations for the unexpired term? for the unexpired term? If not, we will vote on the nomination for the unexpired term. Diana Lewis was nominated first, so we will vote on her. Ms. Hensley?
No.
Diana for Diana Lewis?
No.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Ms. Simpson?
Yes.
Ms. Roundtree?
Yes.
And the mayor votes no. So Ms. Lewis has not been appointed. Vote for Stuart Glassman. Ms. Hensley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Simpson?
Yes.
Ms. Roundtree?
Yes.
And the mayor votes yes. So Stuart Glassman has been appointed to the unexpired term for Planning Board. The other one, Frederick Nace, there was only one person, so we will vote on that as, along with all the rest. Tree Board, we have two vacancies for full term for at-large seat, and one vacancy for an unexpired term. We have three applications, Landon Justice, Mark Madsen, and Mary Davis. Anyone like to make nominations?
Madam Mayor, I would like to nominate Mark Madsen.
Okay, for the, one of the full terms or the unexpired term?
Full term.
Full term, okay. Are there other nominations for one of the two full-term positions?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to nominate Mary Davis for the full term.
Okay. Mary Davis has been nominated for a full-term position. Is, are there further nominations for the full-term position? Okay, we have one unexpired term. Are there any nominations for the unexpired term? Any nominations for the unexpired term?
Madam Mayor, I'll nominate Landon, I nominate Landon Justice for the unexpired term.
Okay, thank you. Landon Justice has been nominated for the unexpired term. Are there further nominations for that unexpired term? Not. Nominations are closed, and we will vote on that with the rest. Walk of Fame Steering Committee, there is a vacant seat. We have one application. Marcia Mills Kelso.
Madam Mayor, I move the City Council appoint Marcia Mills Kelso to the term on the Walk of Fame Steering Committee, ending December 31, 2020.
Okay. Marcia Mills Kelso has been nominated. Are there further nominations? Hearing none, the nominations are closed. The TDA, we have a vacant seat, an unexpired
Madam Mayor, I ask that we defer this to your January meeting, please. We're still trying to recruit a member. The person who was interested already serves on too many boards to be appointed.
Okay. All right. We will postpone that one. And that is all of our appointments. We have a vote on those where there were, there was, and then one person nominated for each position. So we will go ahead and vote on all of those. Ms. Roundtree?
Aye.
Simpson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And Ms. Hensley?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. So we have all of those appointments made, and we will figure out the TDA later on. Closed session. Will we be going into closed session?
Yes, ma'am, please.
All right. So we will need a motion to enter closed session.
Madam Mayor, I move that City Council enter into closed session pursuant to NC GS 143-318.11A1 and 4, to prevent the disclosure of information that is privileged or confidential pursuant to the law of the state or of the United States, or not considered a public record when it, within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the General Statutes, and to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by the public body.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? We will vote. Ms. Hensley?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Simpson?
Aye.
Ms. Roundtree?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. So we are in closed session.